Good morning, everyone. Seeing that all the board members are now present, Brooks, would you please call the roll to establish a quorum?
Good morning, all. President Darlene Hammond.
Here.
Member Escobedo.
Here.
Vice President Glover Woods.
Here.
Member Lewis.
Here.
Member McQuillan.
Here.
Member Olken.
Here.
Member Orozco Gonzalez.
Here.
Member Patillo Bronson.
Here.
Member Porter.
Here.
Member Rodriguez.
Presente.
Member Yoshimura Taori.
Here, good morning.
Gracias, todos.
All right, very good. So we're now going to reopen item one to take action on the preliminary report of actions draft July 2022 meeting minutes and to have members report on their liaison assignments. And while we're waiting for any members of the public to call in, so I think we need to show the public comments slide if we could. Do I have a motion from a board member to approve the July 2022 State Board of Education draft preliminary report of action meeting minutes?
They're moved.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, someone can figure out who said that first. With that, are there any public comments? We'll give it a little moment of wait time once we are breathing.
There are no public comments at this time.
All right. Any further discussion? Seeing no hands going up, Brooks, can we call the roll call vote?
Yes, and for the record, we have Vice President Glover Woods seconding that motion.
Thank you.
President Darlene Hammond.
Aye.
Member Escobedo.
Aye.
Vice President Glover Woods.
Yes.
Member Lewis.
Yes.
Member McQuillan.
Aye.
Member Olken.
Yes.
Member Orozco Gonzalez.
Aye.
Member Patillo Bronson.
Yes.
Member Porter.
Abstain, I was not present.
Member Rodriguez.
Yes.
Member Yoshimura Taori.
I was also not present, abstain.
Motion passes, thank you.
Thanks very much. So now I want to invite the state board members to report on their liaison activities that are not related to any items on our September agenda. And occasionally, we also have announcements that you want to bring to the board. So I will call on the new members in case you have anything you want to add at this moment, and soon you will also be in the liaison lineup. But let's start with Member Escobedo.
Great. I was part of the NASP meetings. We had a couple of meetings and discussed some of the proposed increases in Title I, Title III funds, which hopefully will help all of our schools in our district. Also, they have a conference coming next month. I wasn't going to attend, but I was asked to do a presentation on our work and CUS on Tier One, Tier Two. So I'll be presenting, I guess, as a board member and as a university professor as well. And that's with NASP. And what's really interesting in the discussion as each representative from the states, a lot of issues on staffing that's happening throughout the nation. And I find it unfortunate that many states are taking a, I think, a real short-sighted view on facing this problem by just accepting people with bachelors to become teachers and encouraging that without giving much focus on the necessary pedagogy and just so many complexities that, you know, to be a successful classroom teacher that is being circumvented in many of the states, but definitely it's an issue happening throughout our nation. I'm also liaison through WestEd, and they're looking at, you know, these similar issues and they're working on a different design, I believe through Arizona called Reimagining the Workforce, which is looking at definitely focusing on more of the mentor-teacher approach, working with more of a group class where students get to be with social workers throughout the day and students rotate with physical education, the arts. So teachers may have more kids in their roster, however, they see a smaller class size throughout the day because of the rotation that they've created. So WestEd is looking at that as a possible staffing issue, looking at just a different design on how we educate students, I thought, that was has potential at least. Also, been part of the regional English language specialist meeting, a lot of discussions on our state with our ELD, EL students, and a lot of issues on learning loss and also the necessity of enhancing staff development throughout the state, specifically with ELD designated instructions. Seems like they conducted a survey, and that's the most significant gap that's happening throughout our state, which connects me with Dr., our presenters, focus on the importance of that type of instruction, just because how that is connected to redesignation. So I believe that that was my report for the last couple of months.
Unmuted. Thank you so much, Vice President Glover Woods.
Thank you. I am liaison for both the Advisory Commission on Charter Schools and the California Practitioner Advisory Group, and we have items with recommendations from both of those groups on our agenda. So I'd just like to take this time to thank those who serve on those commissions for their participation in last month's meetings, the discussion, and recommendations are things that definitely have helped to inform us as a board as we have moved forward on those particular items. So thank you again to those who serve on both of those commissions. Last week, I had the opportunity to attend the 2022 Annual Roundup of California Educational Organizations, and this roundup was hosted by CASA, which is the California Association of African-American Superintendents and Administrators. I do want to share with you that the event was very well attended. There were educators, parents, community members that were present. Also included in the lineup of speakers were a couple of members of staff from the California Department of Education, Deputy Superintendent Cheryl Cotton, and also Director William McGee. Also included in the lineup of speakers was our own Attorney General, Rob Banta, and he spoke around school safety. So some of the topics that were discussed kind of as a springboard for ongoing discussion this year were transforming California schools, prioritizing students with the greatest needs, universal pre-K, whole-child wellness, and again, school safety. So it was a very wonderful event. Definitely look forward to the convening next year and would invite all of my fellow board members to participate next year if your schedule should so allow. My last comment is just to reiterate a comment made by President Darlene Hammond during her opening report yesterday, which is to share that the recruitment period for upcoming vacancies on ACCS, which is the Advisory Commission on Charter Schools, CPAG, which is the California Practitioners Advisory Group, and the Instructional Quality Commission, also known as the IQC. The recruitment for all three of those upcoming vacancies has begun. So please, if there's anyone interested in being considered for a seat on one of those commissions, I invite you to visit the website, the CDE-SVE website, for more details and the application. And just a reminder, the application deadline does close on September 23rd. And that concludes my report, thank you.
Thank you so much. Member Lewis.
Good morning. I have not been part of any groups that I am the liaison to, any meetings over the last couple of months. We haven't had any, but I do look forward to the future meetings. I kind of feel like I'm slacking here compared to the reports that came before me, but I do look forward to when those committees and groups begin convening again and I can participate in those meetings. But I would just like to just give a shout out to all of the students, the parents, the staff, administrators, and hope they had a great opening to the school year, and I wish the best for all in the upcoming year. And thank you. That ends my report.
We're all entitled to a summer vacation, and some of those committees needed a break. We'll hear more in the next round. Member McQuillan.
Yes, good morning. Dealing with a little bit of allergy and some of the smoke this morning, so pardon me if I have to clear my throat. But a little bit of an update from the committee known as the California Workforce Pathways Joint Advisory Committee. The committee is comprised of a couple of our members from our board and a couple of members from the California Community Colleges Chancellor's Office, also known as the CCCCO. So when you think about this committee, think of CTE, Career Technical Education, and it's funded by two major streams, the, what they call the CTIG, the California Technical Educational Incentive Grant, which is in its seventh year of funding, and the Strong Workforce Program, SWP, that's administered by the California Community Colleges Chancellor's Office. But the update on this is when you think of CTE, it's not, it's not how we used to think of it, like body and vendor or mechanics or plumbers, although that's still a part of it, but it's so much more today about, you know, health careers, technology, business, and finance, so many, so much more of the jobs that we need for the future, you know. So the update I have for, from this committee is that we have selected some metrics that will be measuring the effort in California in this area, and some of those are available now and being captured, such as the CTE student participation rates, you know, students that take one CTE class or two or more classes, measuring that. The second metric are the graduation rates in association with CTE participation. The third are the number of pupils meeting academic and career readiness standards as defined in the College and Career Indicator associated with our school dashboard. The fourth is a newer one. It's the number of pupils obtaining an industry-recognized credential, certificate, license, or other measure of technical skill attainment. That's a new metric. The fifth are the number of former pupils employed and the types of businesses in which they are employed. And then the sixth metric are the number of former pupils enrolled in each of the following post-secondary educational institution, a state apprenticeship program, and a form of job training other than a state apprenticeship program. Those are new metrics, those last three. So the update on the CTIG grant awards this past year, there was $300 million available in the 2122 year of the seventh year of ongoing funding. After the applications were scored by CDE in the first round, 342 applicants were funded of about, I think there was 370 applications that came in, 342 were funded. So CDE put out a second round, a 7B round, and 31 additional applications were funded in 7B. So a total of $248,459,000 were allocated out this past year under CTIG. So going forward, the plan is the CCCCO, Community Colleges have contracted with Jobs for the Future, JFF, to administer and facilitate the development and writing of the plan for California, a new CTE plan that'll pull together the CTIG and the Perkins Five Federal Program. The draft plan was approved at our recent committee back on August 11th this year. The next steps will be that CDE will post the draft plan for a 45-day public comment period, and then CDE will present its edited draft plan along with the statements and requests from the 45-day public comment period at the November Subcommittee Meeting, November. The edited plan, if approved, will then be presented at our meeting in January, as well as the Board of Governors' meeting in January for potential approval. So the California draft plan, so take a look at that during the public comment period for input and edits. And that's it on that Subcommittee. One other announcement I'd like to make is that, you know, in California, we have the Amber Alert System, and then we have the Silver Alert System. But recently, the legislation approved what's called the Feather Alert Program. As many of you know, tribes throughout the state of California and the nation have had a rough time with missing and murdered members of, as tribal members. And this, the 23rd of this month, the governor will have an opportunity to sign that bill, the Feather Alert System for California. And just so happens, the 23rd is California Indian Day also. It's been around since Governor Ronald Reagan approved it, but an opportunity to sign that bill into law for the Feather Alert System. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you so much. Member Olken.
Thank you, thank you. I too have a somewhat brief report this month because I'm the liaison to both the Advisory Commission on Charter Schools, which we have a couple of issues on, items on the agenda, and also the Advisory Commission on Special Education. So I'm going to speak to that one. I had the pleasure of attending the August meeting of the Advisory Commission on Special Education. It's really a joy to be a fly on the wall at this commission meeting. The commissioners represent an incredible cross-section of stakeholders, educators at every level, parents, policymakers, advocates. There is a clear commitment amongst this group to collaborate on behalf of students with disabilities, and there's such clear respect for the varied expertise of the group. I may have said this before, but it feels a little bit like the way the very best IEP meetings run, where you have stakeholders, all who care very much about the success of children with disabilities, and they come together and each bring something important to the table. So I love attending these meetings. The August meeting was the first meeting of the new school year, and so there was sort of a start-of-school feel, which was fantastic. State Superintendent Thurman joined the meeting to share some framing thoughts on the importance of the commission's work and also his hopes overall for this new school year. And over the course of the two-day meeting, we had several new commissioners were sworn in. There was a thorough and really helpful report from staff at the Legislative Analyst Office outlining the legislative and budget process. It was sort of like how a bill becomes a law on steroids, little Schoolhouse Rock moment. The commissioners reviewed last year's accomplishments in order to begin drafting their annual report, which is actually something that's presented to us at a future meeting. And they worked with folks from Supporting Inclusive Practices on a logic model to help guide their work and actions this year. And I found that really interesting, the process of working through the logic model as they were thinking about what their initiatives are going to be, what their legislative agenda would be, and how they can help further the work in the field and also really provide education and support to those who are doing the work at the school and county and district level. So it was a great meeting. And last thing I would just say is, just in terms of the new school year, it's been, I just want to echo the congratulations and good wishes that we've heard for those in schools. From my own experience, it's been really great to start a year that has a little bit less question and feels more stable and it's just been a great start. And I think both students and educators are really ready to roll up their sleeves and get to work after a prolonged period of strangeness. So anyway, it's great to be back in the school year, and it's great to be with all of you. Thanks.
True, thank you. Member Orozco Gonzalez.
Let me unmute myself. Well, it's been, you know, as the classroom teacher and the board and teaching second grade and actually have back-to-school night today, it's been a very, very busy last few weeks, but really good busy work. I think that from reviewing our test scores to getting into the trenches of what we did last year, to doing that reflection process and seeing how we can improve our instruction has been really meaningful, and it is every year. As my assignment being liaison on assessment, I always say it's important for communities and families and students, educators, to be able to know how the dashboard is structured and how to access data to help guide learning and target the needs of our students. When information is accessible and available for educators, we can make better informed decisions for our students, and we can plan meaningful curriculum for them. In our last month's meeting, the CDE recommended, if we mentioned an item for using shorter adjusted blueprints for the Smarter Balance Semitative Assessments. This, I think, is a huge benefit. I always think reduced testing time allows for more instruction, just increases that instructional time, where I think teachers are every day developing formative and semitive assessments. I know that we're doing diagnostics. I just finished two weeks ago assessing all my students and really understanding deeply where their reading levels are and getting them ready for that, you know, now, getting them ready for that third-grade test, because we want them to be successful as they transition to the next grade level. So I want to remind teachers that we have the tool for teachers at our CDE website. These tools for teachers are, have the new formative assessment component and Smarter Balance Assessment System. It is also, has a huge collection of online resources that are aligned with the Common Core Standards that support the K-12 teachers. And I think these formative assessments that are available have assessable strategies embedded in every instructional resource. What I like more about these tools is that they're developed by teachers and have been reviewed by a huge network of, throughout the state of teachers. I know that at one point I was reviewer for some of these items, and I know that they go through a huge process of just vetting and making sure that they're aligned to grade level standards. So that concludes my presentation, and I welcome all teachers to visit that. It's the beginning of the school year, and when you have a little gap of time, which is limited, I know it's not always, please visit those tools for teachers, and I think that you'll find that they're really great resources for your classroom.
Terrific. We're going to go to Member Patillo Bronson.
Good morning. I have two items I'm going to report out on. One is that we had the successful completion of the California State Summer School for the Arts session, which actually began in July and concluded on August. For folks who might not know, the California Summer School for the Arts is a four-week program in residence at CalArts with a host of visiting artists, special screenings, weekly showcases of student work. And it's really designed to bring together some of the more promising and dedicated young art students from across the state in one very intensive program. It focuses on dance, film, music, theater, visual arts, writing, and has a growing animation program. As that concluded, the Board of Trustees, to which I'm a liaison, also held its summer strategic planning session. So immediately, hardly taking a breath for having provided a jam-packed four weeks of content for the summer school program, the board immediately launched into a discussion around what is the future of the summer school, what are the assets to leverage, how to actually connect with the many now well-established and in some circles quite famous and in pop culture circles, quite well-known alumni of the program to make sure that it's something that's widely understood as a offering that's available to young artists throughout California. I think there has also been an ongoing discussion around how to ensure appropriate outreach to ensure that the program draws across geographies, socioeconomics, language, ethnic backgrounds in order to really represent all of California's diversity. In the last budget, there was an inclusion of increased funding for the Summer School for the Arts, which I think was very much well-received with great gratitude by both the program and ministry, as well as the students, because much of that funding is going to go into scholarships so that this great California offering isn't one that precludes anyone as a reason of not being able to pay tuition for the summer. So really excited for the progress that's being made there and more to come. Once we have actual applications becoming available, I'll be sure to flag that in case any of you all want to share that with your in-person works as well. The second meeting liaison is with the Early Childhood Policy Council, which met on July 19th. And there are really three things I wanted to highlight there. One, and I think the one that is most obvious and closest in connection to our work here at the state board was on the, an ongoing implementation of Universal TK as part of School to Three initiatives. I think most of you will know, we are rolling this out successive, in successive years until 2026. Also, I think there was a really robust discussion around the developmental sort of practices within that, and I think obviously this last year's budget of bringing down the adult-to-child ratio to reflect how unique the early years are and the need for different sort of staffing ratio. I don't know if anyone's ever been in a classroom where there's 34-year-olds and one adult, but that is not ideal for a variety of reasons. And we're really excited that the state budget included funding to actually bring that adult-to-child ratio into a proportion that better suits child development, learning, and also a better experience for everyone. The second thing that they provided an update on was the transition of childcare programs and also early learning programs for zero to three to the Department of Social Services. This is, the Department of Social Services childcare programs both oversees zero to three as well as school-age after-school care, so they're critical partners in terms of ensuring that the community wraparound supports for children, particularly in, from zero to 12, are there to ensure that kids have a safe place to be after school, have a place to learn, to do homework, to be nurtured and cared for. And the exciting thing that is also on the horizon is that the DSS rate-setting work group has been meeting and is very close to finalizing recommendations around wage sufficiency and how to address teacher shortages in the earliest years. The last thing I'll mention is that there was also a presentation on family-centered two-generation approaches, particularly focusing on home visitation in the context of the Early Childhood Policy Council. Oftentimes, home visiting is described as a zero-to-five innovation, but I lifted up because... the Early Childhood Policy Council. Oftentimes home visiting is described as a zero to five innovation, but I, I lifted up because many school districts across California have had a history of doing home visiting with school age children as well. And the, the research on the importance of creating, fostering, nurturing, developing, and maintaining those school to family connections, I think is, is only growing and just wanting to cross pollinate between the zero to five space and the K to 12 space that there, there are new pathways for both how to fund and cover the costs of these, some with Medicaid, which is a new funding stream to draw down to think about how again to wrap around the full supports for kids to make sure they're ready to learn. And that concludes my report.
Terrific. There's so much being done right now. Student member Porter, would you like to make any comments?
Yes, thank you. So as you all know, this was my first month officially in office and with that I had two main goals. So first, I wanted to increase the visibility of the student member position using student friendly language on social media. And second, I wanted to increase the number of student applicants to serve on the state board next year and the instructional quality commission student seat. So I used three main strategies to accomplish this. So first, I created a video describing each of these positions and posted it on TikTok, YouTube, Twitter, and Instagram. And using social media tracking insights, I am very happy to report that over nine thousand users have seen this video and six thousand nine hundred of those views came from Instagram and the numbers just continue to climb. Second, in collaboration with Los Angeles Unified School District Student Empowerment Commission, I met with fifty students to host a town hall answering questions about these two opportunities and encouraging younger students to begin thinking about ways to get involved in their own schools. During the summer, I spoke at Ed 100 Student Academy, speaking to over two hundred and fifty young leaders throughout our state about these two opportunities as well. Lastly, I collaborated with Generation Up and the California Association of Student Councils to co-create a social media post explaining these positions to their audience of young leaders using student friendly language and graphics. So now I'm working closely with the leadership team at CASC to prepare for the Student Advisory Board on Education's conference in October and November. So that way our students can be represented at our November meeting and brainstorm and crack their recommendations to be presented to this board. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Terrific. That's the first state board member report that I've heard about a board member posting on TikTok. So I appreciate the fact that you're reaching the audience in a new way.
Meet them where they're at, right?
Member Rodriguez.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. And yes, TikTok is the way to go. So I will report on CTC. Member McQuillan reported on our QuapJack, the which I learned was the acronym for the Workforce Preparation Group. And so I'll devote my time to CTC, which is actually a pretty long report. First of all, I am so pleased to share the wonderful news that the National Board for Professional Teaching Standards Board of Directors voted to present the James A. Kelly Award for accomplished teaching to Dr. Mary Vixi Sandy, who is the executive director of the CTC. A little bit about the award. It was established in honor of James Kelly, the founding president of NVPTS. And it is given to recognize and honor individuals who provide clear, consistent and convincing evidence of their ability to foster Mr. Kelly's legacy of accomplished teaching, which includes a deep seated belief in the inherent right of all children to a quality education, life dedicated to improving education for teachers and students, passionate commitment to improving teaching and learning in America, unwavering dedication to the professional integrity and competence of teachers, vision, capacity for to inspire collaboration. And among us, we have a, one of, a recipient of this award, President Linda Darling Hammond, others who have been awarded from California, Dr. Mike Hurst, and among, you know, other recipients or governors and former presidents. So it's very exciting and very deserving. Dr. Sandy does, you know, a tremendous work bringing together community partners and her vision for our, our children in California and for the teaching profession is evident in every word that she speaks. So please join me in congratulating her. Also tomorrow, I will be speaking at the Meredith Fellow's Implementation Conference on Performance Assessment. I think I was asked because I said that I wanted to make a T-shirt that says all life is a performance assessment because we, you know, it's, it's what we do, it's that we, how, how we demonstrate what we know, right? And bring information that we learn in teacher preparation school, bring it together in front of our students and, and have our students also demonstrate what they know to us with their performance tasks. So I'm excited to represent teachers in, in this capacity as a national board certified teacher. I know that teaching and learning can be messy, right? It's, it's definitely not a filtered picture. And so I hope to share some of the, how a reflective practitioner serves our students in a way that we get them, we set valuable goals for them and take them through that, the, that helix to make sure that they meet those goals and we guide them along the way. So, you know, I've, I've said this before, I wouldn't want an airplane pilot to not demonstrate what they know before they get behind an airplane that I'll be flying in and, or a surgeon, you know, not being able to demonstrate to other professionals that they know what they're doing. Just like I wouldn't want a teacher in front of my students who hasn't demonstrated to a body, you know, that has set the standards for teaching, that they know what they're doing. So I'm very excited about presenting tomorrow at the conference. So some of the updates at the CTC meeting that happened in August, the Commission's Literacy Work Group undertook a review of the Commission's adopted, adopted educator preparation program standards related to the literacy teacher performance expectations and submitted recommendations for consideration by the CTC in accordance with SB forty eight. SB forty eight was talked about in the June meeting, but hopefully I'll give you enough information with this report if you're not familiar with the, with the Senate bill. So the initial focus of the work group has been, you know, giving, giving the updates on the program standards. The Literacy Work Group will have a final meeting because there are deadlines to SB four eighty eight on September thirteenth to review the data from the field and surveys as well as feedback and direction from commissioners before recommending any final revisions that they think are necessary and appropriate. And staff will present the full set of the literacy program standards and teacher performance expectations to the commission for adoption in October twenty twenty, or coming up next month. The product that will result from the requirements of SB forty eight is to develop universal program standards and teacher performance expectations, TPEs, that will not only provide high standards in programs for traditional K through twelve community, but to also meet the very unique developmental learning needs of PK three students and all students with dyslexia. Establishing standards for PK three and dyslexia needs that are cookie cutter of grade one will not work. Literacy standards need to reflect the reality of the developmental stages of all early learners. For the Cal APA, which is the Administrator Performance Assessment, so we're moving on here. The CTC heard an update on the first four years of implementation. And it's very favorable. People are showing, you know, that they're very pleased with the process. And they were informed about Leadership Cycle One, which is analyzing data to inform school improvement and promote equity. Cycle Two, facilitating communities of practice, and Cycle Three, supporting teacher growth. So the, in, in June, a couple of meetings ago, the commission endorsed the proposed authorization statement and credential requirements for the Early Childhood Education Specialists. The CTC reviewed and adopted the proposed, proposed regulations for newly repurposed PK three ECE specialist instruction credential. And so that's very, very exciting. The requirements for PK three include possession of a bachelor's or higher degree from a regionally accredited institution, completion of a professional preparation program that meets PK ECE program standards, passage of a commission approved teaching performance, performance assessment, and passage of either the RICA or a commission approved literacy performance assessment. And the, I'm going to go to some very exciting news that makes me tremendously grateful to live in California as an educator. The, and that is the enacted twenty twenty-two, twenty-three budget as it relates to the commission. The C, the budget provides three hundred thirty point five million dollars for a total of twenty-nine new positions for the agency and fee waivers, twenty-four million one-time general fund to waive teacher examination and assessment fees. And these examinations include the Cbest, CSET, RICA, TPA, NTPA, and APA. So, you know, now I, I won't go into detail if you want the details on the specific positions that will be opening at the CTC, I'm happy to, to email those to you, but they are long. But in they, in there, they include reading and literacy grants, accreditation, Center for Teaching Careers, one point seven million of one-time general fund to support Polari County Office of Education to continue administering the California Center on Teaching Careers. So that concludes my report.
You've buttoned off. Thank you so much. Member Yoshimoto Tari, would you like to make some remarks?
Hi, good morning. I just wanted to offer my personal reflections. This being my first state board meeting. And yesterday's experience has reaffirmed for me the impact of the decisions that the State Board of Education makes, particularly given the diverse student population that we serve, but also the diversity of county offices, districts, schools, and communities that we serve. So it kind of had three reflections at this point, which one was the importance of the systems of gathering meaningful feedback and engagement. So I'm happy to hear all of my colleagues liaison reports and relationships because that's so important. Secondly, to really highlight the state's efforts to do the outreach that we talked about yesterday, the communication, the webinars, the, the different toolkits such as the one that was released last month. And then finally, third is just what board member Porter reinforced this morning, which is that young people are a source of inspiration and opportunity for us to continue to learn and innovate. So as many of my colleagues have shared, just let's make this a wonderful school year. Campus and school is often a place where students experience joy, wellness, in, in addition to the teaching and learning that happens at a place where real innovation can happen. So thank you again.
Terrific. Thank you. And I'll just say briefly, so much of the work that we've all been doing has had to do with implementation all of these major initiatives over the last couple of years. And member Patillo Bronson brought us up to date on the UPK, the Universal TK and other early childhood work. There is a lot of work going on in the teacher pathways and so I've intersected with some of that around the launch of program design conversations at the California State University System. I addressed one, one group of their early childhood providers. And across the state, we're trying to really get people to think about the challenges of the new ECE credential and the many, many ways that we will build that educated workforce and a lot is happening to be pleased about and a lot of it happening with great alacrity and speed. Member Escobedo talked about the fact that there, there is a lot of staffing challenge around the country. Of course, we've put in place multi billions of dollars for residencies and Golden State scholarships and career pathways for paraprofessionals and many other ways to address our shortages. We are beginning to see some changes. We've got an uptick in enrollments in teacher education that is noticeable. And there are, from a recent analysis of the CTC surveys, about fourteen hundred people who were involved in residencies last year, candidates who came through residency programs. They were the most positive about their preparation experiences of the various categories of entrance into the into the profession. Seventy plus residencies now exist across the state. And that is, is beginning to spread across the country. Texas has just put about a billion dollars into residencies in that state as well. So we are seeing that grow and there's a lot of, with all these programs, there's a lot of growing pains and implementation concerns and we're trying to stay on top of that. Particular props to our state board staff member, Rajal Masara, who keeps track of all of that and, and is really enabling a lot of smoothing of the way for many of these programs. We've also just gotten going on centers that were funded in the prior budget for accelerated learning, for helping support professional development, for people who may be involved in classroom teaching and tutoring and small group instruction to support, really enabling students to move more rapidly in their skill development. Some would say to catch up from the, the learning lag that has experienced. So we now have several centers across the state that are now beginning to do that work. The new IEP template and other innovations that were part of the budget previously is continuing to be developed. There's a a team that is working on that for our special education students and also on the development of a pathway to a diploma for students who previously were not able to do that. So that's very exciting progress in that arena. You all know about the fact that the community schools initiatives are continuing to roll out and there will be several opportunities to hear about the gains that, and the strategies that different districts are taking. And the Department of Education is about to do a set of webinars that will bring people in and let them learn from each other. So you may want to keep an eye out for that if that's an area that you're working with. And finally, the school year is starting, as many people have said, with, you know, a sense of normalcy and a sense of going direct and being able to, you know, be, be back fully. At the same time, we do continue to have concerns about the variants of COVID nineteen and about the virus. So this afternoon, I'll partner with our friends at the California Department of Public Health in a sort of public service hour about what districts can expect and ways in which they can keep students safe, engage in mitigation strategies. We'll hear from several districts that are doing very thoughtful work on everything from vaccinations to testing to their whole range of mitigation strategies that we want to keep people alert to so that we can, in fact, stay in business, keep kids in school and be healthy this year. So with that, I will move us to our agenda for the day and we are going to take up the waiver consent calendar. And we are going to take up the waiver consent calendar. And we're going to take up waiver consent items one through nine, W one through W nine. We're going to open the phone line for public comments. So, let's get the public comment slide up there. And we're going to take a moment to allow people to queue up and call in if they care to do so. So, this is our moment for mindfulness. Take a breath.
President Darlene Hammond. While everyone's taking their mindfulness break, we would just like to remind the public that this is public comment for the waivers. As President Darlene Hammond just reminded everyone, for waivers W one through W nine, if you're seeking to call in on the subsequent item, item 11 regarding the charter appeal, please call back at that time. We see that there are a number of callers that, based on the area code, we think may be calling in for that item. We would just like to remind them that this is not the moment for that.
Thank you. That's very helpful. So, if you are calling for the next item on the charter appeal, hang up now and call back. And with that, let me ask, is there any... Is there any public comment on the waiver items? Is anybody still on the phone?
We see some callers dropping, but it appears we may have two.
Okay.
Okay, I will open the phone line now. Please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now. Hello? Okay, it looks like they hung up. We have one caller left. I will answer that one, and we'll see if it's for this item. Caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now. Caller, ending in the last four digits, 2022, you are live. Please start your public comment now. Okay, it looks like that they were all for the next item. That concludes public comment for the waiver consent items.
All right. Given that there's no other public comment, I'll now ask for a motion on waivers W one through W nine. Do I have a motion?
You're moved?
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. We'll now hold a roll call vote. Brooks, can you call the roll?
President Darlene Hammond.
Aye.
Member Escobedo.
Aye.
Vice President Glover Woods.
Yes.
Member Lewis.
Yes.
Member McQuillan.
Aye.
Member Olken.
Yes.
Member Orozco Gonzalez.
Yes.
Member Patilla Bronson.
Yes.
Member Porter.
Yes.
Member Rodriguez.
Yes.
Member Yoshimoto Tauri.
Yes.
Motion passed, unanimous.
All right. We're moving on to item number 11, which is the appeal of the denial of a petition for the establishment of a classroom-based charter pursuant to California Education Code, Section 47605-K2, its consideration of evidence to hear or summarily deny the appeal of Maya Comas Charter Middle School, which was denied by the Napa Valley Unified School District and the Napa County Board of Education. The California Department of Education recommends that we hear the appeal, and this item will be presented by Stephanie Farland of the CDE. Stephanie?
Good morning. Good morning, President Darling Hammond. Board members, Deputy Superintendent Sarah Neville Morgan. It's good to be here today. Before I begin, I just want to recognize that today kicks off National Hispanic Heritage Month. And as the daughter of Mexican immigrants, I just want to recognize the contributions of all of Latino and Hispanic and Latinx Americans in this country and specifically those of my parents, who I'm very proud of and have contributed much to California and to this country. So, I just wanted to recognize that it does start today. This morning, as President Darling Hammond mentioned, this item will be to decide to hear or to make a decision to hear or summarily deny the appeal of Maya Comas Charter Middle School. A little background, the Maya Comas Charter Middle School petition proposes a new grade six through eight charter school. MCMS, as we will call it, submitted its petition to the Napa Valley Unified School District pursuant to California Ed Code, Section 47605-A. The district denied the petition on December 9, 2021, by a vote of seven to zero. MCMS then appealed the NVUSD's denial to the Napa County Board of Education pursuant to Ed Code, Section 47605-K1-AI. The county denied the petition on March 15, 2022, by a vote of five to two. MCMS then submitted its petition to the California State Board of Education on April 14, 2022, pursuant to Ed Code, Section 47605-K2. In this item pursuant to Ed Code, Section 47605-K2E, the SBA shall decide to either hear the appeal or summarily deny a review of the appeal based on the documentary record. If the SPE decides to hear the appeal, the matter will be considered in the following item. If the SPE decides to summarily deny the appeal, the decisions of the District and County Board of Education will stand, and there will be no further determination... Or sorry, no further hearings on this item. Our recommendation, the CDE's recommendation today, is that the State Board of Ed vote to hear the Maya Comas Charter School appeal. At its August 11, 2022, meeting, the Advisory Commission on Charter Schools voted to adopt the CDE's recommendation that the SPE hear the MCMS appeal, and that motion passed by a vote of seven to one. MCMS has met all appeal timelines and submitted a record of the findings from NVUSD and NCBOE and a written submission with citations to the documentary record pursuant to Ed Code, Section 47605-K2A. MCMS appeals both the district and the county's decisions to deny its petition. NVUSD and NCBOE also provided written oppositions with specific citations to the documentary record pursuant to Ed Code, Section 47605-K2C. These documents demonstrate that there is a factual dispute concerning the procedural history of NCBOE's denial of MCMS's petition. Based on the CDE's review of all documents and in alignment with the ACCS's recommendation, the CDE recommends that the SPE hear the MCMS appeal. And that concludes our presentation.
At this point, we will now open the phone line for public comments. So, we want to put the public comment slide up there again. This item is limited...
Oh, sorry. Were we getting the public hearing, President Darling Hammond? Correct? Not public comment.
I'm just following my script, and it says this is the public comment.
Oh, okay. Sorry. You're correct. Sorry.
I think the next item will be the public...
Yes, I'm sorry. Thank you for correcting me. It's my fault. Thank you.
So, we opened the phone line for public comment. This item is limited to a decision whether or not to hear the appeal. People wishing to make comments on the merits of the appeal and whether there has been an abuse of discretion should please wait and comment on the next item, item 12. The members of the public wishing to provide comment on this item may do so by calling the telephone number and using the access code provided on the slide that is shown now. We encourage you to please state your name and affiliation for the record. Please remember to turn down the speaker volume of your computers if you're following the live feed, and speakers will be limited to one minute each. Speakers needing Spanish translation will be given two minutes. Are there any public comments? Again, just on whether we would hear the appeal.
We do have a number of people signed up for public comment. I will open up the phone line now.
Oh, I also should ask the translator to provide those instructions in Spanish for callers who may need translation when they give their input.
Hello, good morning. I am the Spanish translator that will be providing the instructions. Buenos dias todos. Este parte de la agenda, el artículo se limita a la decisión de oír la apelación, las personas deseando de hacer comentarios de los méritos de la apelación. Y si hubo un abuso de discreción, deben de esperarse y hacer comentario en el siguiente artículo. Artículo número 12 es parte de la agenda. Miembros del público que desean de proporcionar un comentario en este artículo lo pueden hacer por teléfono. En el número de teléfono que se proporciona con el código de acceso que también se proporciona en el siguiente dispositivo, en su pantalla, también le animamos que por favor digan su nombre, con quién están, por el registro y por el acta. Asegúrense y recuerden que por favor bajen el volumen de sus... El volumen de sus speakers de la computadora si es que están haciendo el comentario en vivo. Las personas deseando de ser comentario debe de ser limitado a un solo minuto. Personas que van a necesitar servicios de traducción se les van a proporcionar dos minutos. ¿Hay alguien en la línea de español que desean de ser algún comentario público?
Okay, we will start the public comment now. Good morning, caller. Please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now. Caller, ending in the last four digits, 7421, please start your public comment now.
Good morning, members of the State Board. My name is Kathy Mancini, and I'm calling on behalf of the California School Employees Association, urging the Board to summarily deny this appeal just because there is a dispute of... Just because the petitioners disagree with the facts in this case does not mean that an abuse of discretion occurred, and we would strongly encourage the Board to summarily deny. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
Hi, thank you so much for the honor to speak to the Board today. I am Hannah Henry, calling from Napa, California. I ask the Board to deny this appeal. We have spent enough time and resources, the entire district and the county have spent already enough time on this charter petition, which is essentially an effort for the privileged few. And we have much work to do, and much work has been done already to address the needs of middle schoolers. I have a fifth grader going into sixth grade, and I have three older children who have all gone through Napa Public Middle Schools. We need to focus our efforts on that process, on the new schools and this school year. Please deny this appeal. It's a waste of our time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
Good morning, President Darling Hammond, Vice President Glover Woods, and esteemed Board members. This is Gina Plaid on behalf of the California Charter Schools Association. We are honored to be here on behalf of the students and families that are asking for this program, and we support the recommendation from the department. And we encourage you to vote to hear the appeal of Maya Comas Charter Middle School. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
Hi, my name is Alicia Kronback. I'm a parent of a middle school child. I live here in Napa County, and my son was born and raised in Napa County. Students are a kaleidoscope of strength and needs, and the public schools should reflect that. MCMS is a viable, fiscally responsible, and diverse choice for a community that has consistently lost choices in the last five years. I respectfully ask that the SPE hear the MCMS appeal and make a decision based on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
Hi, my name is Marisa Plus, and my daughter attends Pueblo Vista Elementary School. And we are so grateful to be part of the public school system in Napa, but we ask that you deny the Maya Comas Charter petition. The students would be negatively impacted in the current schools, and resources should stay where they're at and improve the systems that are already in place. Thank you so much for hearing me and for your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
Hi, good morning. Thank you so much. My name is Sylvia Regalotto Zachlot. I am a parent of the Napa Valley Unified School District. We have three children that have gone pre-K through currently in high school now. And I want the state and the Board to adamantly oppose denying hearing this any further. You have put the due diligence on your local governments, county, school districts, to make decisions. They have painfully gone through all of the appeals process with this charter and have found that the best interest of over 16,000 students in Napa Valley benefit from having a collective school district where many changes have been made and many students are currently thriving, and those options are still available to them. And we welcome them to come into our schools and be a part of a great community that is flourishing. Please deny this appeal and continue to invest in students by not wasting tax dollars. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I just wanted to jump in real quickly to remind our public callers that these calls are really solely about the decision about whether or not to hear the appeal. If you're calling in about item 12, which will occur if the Board votes to hear the appeal about whether it's to affirm or to reverse, please call in for item 12. If you're calling in to comment on whether it should be heard or not, please proceed. Thank you.
Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
Hi, my name is Marie Dennett. I speak as a community member, a mother, and a trauma-informed healthcare provider to advocate for this appeal. NVUSD has and continues to create harm in the community by working so persistently to block Maya Comas from opening a smaller, unique, mentally health-focused, creative, and diversified learning environment Maya Comas desires to provide. It's not only desired, but desperately needed in our community. NVUSD has made it abundantly clear that they have no interest in listening to our community beyond the example they set by spreading vicious rumors about Maya Comas throughout this process and working incessantly to stop Maya Comas from opening. They have also recently closed a valued and cherished 20-year program for preschool-aged children with special needs and have, for financial reasons, absorbed the children into their own district despite doing any of the ethical preparation needed to make a transition like this. They didn't listen to the parents of the children who that program served either in the meetings I've attended. NVUSD has blatantly stated that they don't care if they didn't have the support to do it because they have the right legally. This says a lot about the way it works and is not for the benefit.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
My name is Wendy Beltrami, retired NVUSD staff member, and I'm speaking today in support of Maya Comas Charter. In the course of the charter application process, Maya Comas was demonized by NVUSD, characterized as something that would take resources from our Spanish-speaking families. In addition, Napa families were told that it was necessary to close two beloved middle schools to avoid program cuts and financial ruin. And yet, now, we're hearing the same dire predictions and are being asked to support a $200 million bond measure, further exacerbating the lack of trust families are feeling with the school district. Napa Valley Unified's habit of telling Napa families what they want and need instead of asking them has set us on a path to middle school mediocrity. One size does not fit all. Maya Comas will fill a need that is sorely lacking in our current middle school offerings. There are kids who will not thrive in the big-box schools. Our community needs a public charter option. Please consider hearing the appeal for the Maya Comas Charter. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
Our city needs a public charter option. Please consider hearing...
Caller, ending in the last four digits, 3304, you are live. Please start your public comment now.
Hello, this is Claire Crawford with In the Public Interest, and I urge the Board to summarily deny this appeal. The fact of the matter is that the district and the county both appropriately evaluated this petition as having a negative fiscal and community impact on NVUSD, and nothing in the record indicates that there was any prejudice against the petitioners in coming to this conclusion. It's very clear that this is a tough decision that the district was required to take to ensure the fiscal stability of the entire district. And both the district and the county took appropriate steps navigating this brand-new law that was intended to allow districts to make these kinds of tough decisions without the state reversing them. So, I urge you to summarily deny this petition.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
Good morning. My name's Hector Viegas, CSEA Chapter President, Napa 184. So, not only does it... So not only does it affect the students, but you have got to also consider the 600-plus that are going to get affected by approving this charter. I'm in favor of denial. I just want to thank everybody for participating, and I hope everybody has a great day. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
Hi, my name is Jackie Clayton. I am the First Vice President, CSEA, Napa Chapter 184. I am also an employee in Napa Valley Unified. I just want to go and say my part of the investigation, the evaluation, the appropriate processes were followed in Napa Valley Unified, and their conclusion is non-bias. It is 100% accurate, and I ask that denial be the decision. We care about our students, and these are our students. We want you to deny the charter. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
My name is Kim Smith, and I'm a parent in Napa Valley Unified. I have two kids who've gone through the system and are in it now. I'd like the State to agree to review this appeal because the way the district has tried to balance their own internal financial needs versus truly assessing what is best for the community has been mishandled very badly, and I think the State needs to weigh in and recognize fiscal management does matter, but community engagement, community involvement, what communities want, matters as well. And when a group of parents decides they need something very different from what the district is capable of offering, like Maya Comas in a small system, we need to give them a chance. It took the district 15 years to learn from the River system, River Charter School, and they are not adopting any of the practices Maya Comas is asking us to consider, asking you to consider. So I'd like you to approve this because the district made a mistake in assessing community impact as only considering their own employment roles and not the wide effect on the rest of the district and parents and students.
Thank you.
Please consider this appeal.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now. Caller, ending in the last four digits, 8496. You are live. Please start your public comment now.
I'm calling in support of Maya Comas Middle School. As we all know, middle school can be a challenging time. Creating meaningful options is key to successful transition for many kids. NVUSD had this unique option, one that the community embraced and students thrived in. The abrupt removal of this program, the highest-performing middle school in our district, was strangely justified by NVUSD. They are telling us the things that we need rather than listening to what students need and dividing the community in the process. This is why people are leaving the school district. The data does not support this change, and Maya Comas is the unique solution that will allow students to grow and thrive in a challenging and supportive environment. Please consider reversing the school district's choice and support Maya Comas Charter School. Thank you so much for all of your work. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
Hello, my name is Maria Beltran. I am a parent of the NVUSD School District. I want to ask that you appeal the Maya Comas. We have, the schools have closed in the district because of the enrollment being low, and opening up a new school just does not seem feasible at this time with schools being closed and middle schools being merged together. So I plead that you deny this appeal. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
Hi, my name is Linda Yinlay. I was the former head of school, of River School. There is a desperate need for student well-being today. The large middle schools in Napa do not fulfill the needs of all students. The introverts, the kids who don't quite fit in, who are extremely sensitive or experience trauma. There are good ESL programs who work in some schools and not in a lot of others. The difference is the health of the culture. As Peter Drucker said, "Culture eats strategies for breakfast." Maya Comas' unique response is thriving with a 50-year-old school culture approach where the hidden curriculum of culture fulfills students' needs for belonging or autonomy or caring adults model the qualities desired in students, an authentic way of being versus a curriculum you teach. Now more than ever, all students need this type of program not being offered at other Napa schools. Please allow this appeal to be heard.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
Good morning. It's Eric Premack with the Charter Schools Development Center. We believe the track record here clearly justifies the granting of the hearing here, and we support the staff's recommendation to hear it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now. Caller, ending in the last four digits, 3363. You are live. Please start your public comment now.
Oh, thank you. Okay, thank you. I'm a mother of two middle schoolers in Napa Valley Unified School District, and I'm calling in support of the charter appeal for Maya Comas because despite public data regarding student population projections through the next 20 years showing the lowest rates of variability or loss of students at the middle school level in Napa, the district has closed two sorely needed middle schools under very duplicitous means and motives and leaving us with only two horribly overcrowded, low-scoring middle schools where fights are normal every day, or we have one ESL dual language academy which actually does not meet the needs of the entire student community. It's also recently removed an entire half an hour of learning instruction per day and shortened student lunchtime to only 15 minutes. Our district does not foster a positive environment for the intellectual advancement of our collective student population, and it only hinders it and will continue to. And for the record, Maya Comas is not a private school funded with public school dollars. It's actually a public school with higher academic standards.
Your time is up. Thank you.
All of Napa's students. Thank you.
Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
Good morning. My name is Grace, and I'm a recent alumni of NVUSD School District. I fully support the Board's hearing of Maya Comas Charter Middle School appeal. Investing in a variety of choices for students as well as providing social, emotional learning opportunities is essential to many students' successes and ability to thrive within public education. My successes as an NVUSD alumni and now college alumni can be largely attributed to the experiences I had within River Middle School as a public charter option within the time. I think the current state of our community and larger society has attested that giving people choice and autonomy within their decisions is essential. I urge the Board to put children and their educational experiences at the center of this choice. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. That concludes public comment for item number 11.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I appreciate all the public callers. We'll first ask our liaisons, Vice President Glover Woods and Member Olken, if they have any initial comments before we get into more discussion. Vice President Glover Woods.
I think, actually, I'm going to lead us off on this one.
Oh, okay. If you have an arrangement, go for it.
Yeah, thank you. I, both Member Glover Woods and I attended the ACCS meeting where this item was brought and was clear from the testimony that there is a dispute as has been recommended, that should be considered by the State Board, as been recommended by both CDC, CDE, and ACCS. And I want to remind us that, as we have heard on this item, we're only deciding whether there is sufficient evidence for us to hear the appeal. We are not making any, that's the only role that we have at this point. Thank you.
Vice President Glover Woods, did you want to add anything?
Yes, President Darlene Hammond, I definitely would, and my addition is really more of a reiteration that what we are deciding at this time is to decide to either hear the charter denial appeal or summarily deny the appeal because we don't feel there are any grounds to actually hear the appeal. And I do want to share with my fellow Board members that based on the information that we've received in the documentary record and the discussion of this appeal that Member Olken and I had opportunity to hear at the August ACCS meeting, I do believe that there is sufficient evidence for us to hear the appeal and would recommend that we do so. Thank you.
All right. Well, now let's launch board discussion and see what questions or comments other Board members have. Give a moment. If there are no comments or questions, otherwise, we can take a motion.
I move that we hear the appeal that is before us here on item 11, which is the charter petition from Maya Comas Charter Middle School.
And do I have a second?
I second that.
All right. Brooks, can you call the roll for a vote?
President Darlene Hammond.
Aye.
Member Escobedo.
Aye.
Vice President Glover Woods.
Yes.
Member Lewis.
Yes.
Member McQuillan.
Yes.
Member Olken.
Yes.
Member Orozco Gonzalez.
Yes.
Member Patillo Brownson.
Yes.
Member Porter.
Yes.
Member Rodriguez.
Yes.
Member Yoshimura Towry.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. Before we launch into item 12, which is the public hearing then concerning the appeal, I'd love to give us a break because it's going to be a long next session. We just had our coffee, so we'll take 15 minutes now and come back at 10:10, and we'll be ready for our, to dive into the hearing. See you then. Just turn off your video and mute, but stay connected. All right, uh, welcome back. Uh, item 12 is a public hearing regarding the appeal of the denial of a petition for the establishment of a classroom-based charter school. Pursuant to California.
I apologize, President Darling Hammond. I just need to reestablish a quorum.
Oh, I'm sorry. Please reestablish the quorum.
Uh, President Darling Hammond.
Here.
Member Escobedo.
Here.
Member Glover Woods.
Here.
President Glover Woods, apologies, I'm going too fast. Uh, member Lewis.
Here.
Member McQuillan.
Here.
Member Olken.
Here.
Member Orozco Gonzalez.
Here.
Member Patillo Brownson.
Here.
Member Porter.
Here.
Member Rodriguez.
Present it.
Gracias. Uh, member Yoshimura Towery.
Here, thank you.
We have a quorum.
All right, so item 12 is a public hearing regarding the appeal of the denial of a petition for the establishment of a classroom-based charter school pursuant to California Education Code. Section 47605K2. Consideration of the allegations of abusive discretion made by Maya Comas Charter Middle School, which was denied by the Napa Valley Unified School District and the Napa County Board of Education. And, uh, this item, the California Department of Education recommends that we affirm the decision to deny the petition. The item will be presented by Stephanie Farland of the CDE. And Stephanie, you may begin.
Great, thank you. Um, in the previous item, the State Board of Ed decided to hear the appeal based on the documentary record, so this is what we'll be doing today. Um, item number 12. Some background. In this item, the California State Board of Education will hear the Maya Comas Charter Middle School appeal. Pursuant to California Education Code 47605K2E, the SBE may affirm the determination of the governing board of the school district or the county board of education or both of those determinations. Or the SBE may reverse only upon a determination that there was an abusive discretion. If the SBE does not take action to affirm or reverse the determinations of the governing board of the school district and the county board of education to deny the MCMS petition would stand. The California Department of Education recommends that the SBE affirm the Napa Valley Unified School Districts and the Napa County Board of Education's decisions to deny the petition to establish MCMS pursuant to Ed Code Section 47605K2E. This recommendation is based on the CDE's review of the following. MCMS's written submission, which fails to show an abuse of discretion by either NVUSD or NCBOE, the documentary record and written oppositions by the district and county. Abusive discretion, um, we, we did, uh, go over this at the July meeting, but, but I know we have a new member today and so a couple of new members. Um, so to, uh, review, abusive discretion is the most deferential standard of review. The SBE is required to give deference to the decision of the school district governing board and county board of education to deny the petition. The SBE's review is limited to, limited to a determination of whether the district governing board or county board's decision to deny the charter petition was arbitrary, capricious, and taro entirely lacking in evidentiary support, unlawful, or procedurally unfair. So now we'll go over the Maya Comas Charter Middle Schools allegations of abusive discretion. MCMS stated the following allegations of abuse of discretion by the NVUSD. And these will be the allegations against the district. The factual findings adopted by the district board on December 9th, 2021 are not supported by substantial evidence in the record. The district board failed to proceed in the manner required by law because the district did not provide a fair and impartial petitioning process. Information regarding MCMS's claims can be found in item attachment one. MCMS's allegations against the county. MCMS stated the following allegations of abusive discretion by the NCBOE. The county board's March 15th, 2022 decision to deny the MCMS petition is not supported by the purported factual findings in the county's post-denial declaration findings ratified on April 5th, 2022. The county board's post-denial factual findings are not supported by evidence in the documentary record. The county board failed to proceed in the manner required by law when it failed to either grant the charter petition or timely adopt specific written factual findings to deny. So those were the petitioners' allegations, and now we'll go over the districts and counties' written opposition to their appeal. NVUSD argues it did not abuse its discretion, that its review process was fair and compliant and compliant with Education Code, and that its findings in support of denial were supported by evidence in the record. NVUSD denied the MCMS charter petition based on the following findings. The petition presents an unsound educational program. The petitioners are demonstrably unlikely to successfully implement the program set forth in the petition. The petition does not contain reasonably comprehensive descriptions of elements A through O of Ed Code Section 47605C5. The proposed charter is demonstrably unlikely to serve the interests of the entire community in which the school is proposing to locate. The county written opposition to MCMS's appeal. NCBO, NCBOE argues it did not abuse its discretion because the county board complied with all procedural obligations in the law regarding the MCMS petition. The county board properly adopted specific written factual findings in its support of its decision to deny the petition. The county board's factual findings are supported by substantial evidence in the documentary record. NCBOE denied the MCMS charter petition based on the following finding. MCMS is demonstrably unlikely to serve the interests of the entire community in which the school is proposing to locate. The California Department of Education's review of MCMS's appeal. Based on the CDE's review of MCMS's written submission documentary record and the written oppositions from the district and county, the CDE has determined that NVUSD and NCBOE did not abuse their discretion in their denials of the MCMS petition. A summary of the NVUSD's and NCBOE's findings regarding the MCMS petition, MCMS's allegations of abusive discretion, and the district and county's oppositions is provided in attachment one. Ed Code Section 47605K2A states, "The petitioner shall include the findings and documentary record from the governing board of the school district and the county board of education and a written submission detailing with specific citations to the documentary record how the governing board of the school district or the county board of education or both abused their discretion." MCMS, based on the CDE's review of the written submission and documentary record, MCMS has not met its burden of detailing with specific citations to the documentary record how the district or county abused their discretion in the denial of the charter petition. As will be shown in the upcoming slides, MCMS's written submission lacks detail and does not contain specific citations to the documentary record that support its appeal as required by statute. Although the petitioners did provide 63 references to the documentary record, the references do not establish the evidentiary support necessary to show how the district and county abused their discretion in their decisions to deny the charter petition. CDE's review of MCMS's claims related to the district's findings. MCMS states the factual findings adopted by the district board on December 9th, 2021 are not supported by substantial evidence in the record. It is important to note that substantial evidence, that term, is not the legal standard to be applied in this instance, is not required by Education Code. NVUSD's denial was based on four findings under Ed Code Section 47605C. But MCMS's written submission includes only limited detail relating, relating to a portion of one finding and does not specifically address each finding. The SBE must determine whether the district's determination as a whole constitutes an abusive discretion. The petitioners did not address how the determination to deny was an abuse of discretion. When addressing the district's findings, the written submission contains seven end notes with citations to the documentary record. However, MCMS has not detailed how any of these citations challenge the evidentiary basis of NVUSD's findings. Rather, MCMS's written submission details MCMS's disagreement with NVUSD's conclusions, arguing that NVUSD should have reached different conclusions. But MCMS does not explain how any of the citations supports claim that NVUSD abuses discretion in denying the MCMS petition. MCMS's written submission effectively asks the state board to co, to substitute its own judgment for the district's, which is not permitted under the abusive discretion standard. The next slide will give an example with a screenshot. We thought that might, um, might be helpful. When CDE staff reviewed the written submission, um, I did mention that they had many end notes. So if you look here, end note number 57 cites two pages. Um, for example, the district staff report criticism of the MCMS's budget is almost entirely predicated on the incorrect assumption that the school cannot meet its year one enrollment target. They have a end note there, so we follow the end note to see what the specific allegation of abusive discretion is. End note 57 cites two pages of findings which list several specific facts as the evidentiary basis for the district's conclusion that the MCMS fiscal plan is unrealistic. That's what was at the end of that particular citation. Citation number 58, um, cites two pages of MCMS's response to the district's findings, wherein MCMS argues for different conclusions but does not challenge the evidentiary basis of the NVUSD's findings. And the reason we are showing an example is just to, uh, sort of i- in a uh, to show what it was that we followed. The, the, the Department of Ed, um, as you know, and, and we've said this, um, before, um, that we're not authorized by statute to consider the quality of the charter, the need for the charter, the value of the charter, or the support for the charter. Our review is restricted to the review of the documentary record and when there is sufficient evidence to support local decisions. And so the burden is on the charter, um, to specifically cite how the district and/or county boards abuse their discretion. And in the case of the citations that we received from the, um, petitioners, we did not find that. Next slide. MCMS's written submission then states that MCMS has previously refuted all the district's findings and then cites its entire 28-page response to the end, response to the district staff report. However, the written submission fails to include specific citations within MS, MCMS's response to the staff report to support their appeal and fails to explain how its response to the district staff report supports its claim that the district abused its discretion in denying the MCMS petition. Claims related to the district's findings conclusion, MCMS's written submission contains only limited citations and its challenge to the district's findings lacks the necessary detail to support MCMS's allegation that the district abused its discretion with regard to its findings in support of denial. Therefore, there is insufficient evidence for the SBE to find an abusive discretion related to the district's findings in support of denying MCMS's petition. We'll now move on to the petitioners' claims related to the county's findings. MCMS states the county board's March 15th, 2022 decision to deny the MCMS petition is not supported by the purported factual findings in the county's post-denial declaration findings ratified on April 5th, 2022. MCMS bases the above allegation on its claim that the county's findings simply parroted back the language of Ed Code Section 47605C7 without providing any supporting facts or legal conclusions. However, NCBOE's findings clearly list several specific facts in support of its denial of the MCMS petition, which have been included in attachment one. The second claim related to the county's findings, MCMS states the county board's findings are not supported by evidence in the documentary record. As it did with its challenge to the district's findings, MCMS's written submission here contains some citations to the documentary record but does not challenge the evidentiary basis for the county's findings. Rather, MCMS's written submission argues for its own analysis and conclusions, failing to explain how the county abused its discretion in denying the MCMS petition. Here again, MCMS's written submission is effectively asking the SBE to substitute its own judgment for the county's, which is not permitted under the abusive discretion standard. Therefore, there is insufficient evidence for the SBE to find an abusive discretion related to NCBOE's findings. CDE's review of procedural allegations against the district. This is a recap of what the CDE received as part of the documentary record. MCMS's claims that the district failed to proceed in the manner required by law because the district did not provide a fair and impartial petitioning process. Specifically, MCMS asserts petitioners were permitted to communicate only with the district's legal counsel. The district demanded petitioners attend a capacity interview which focused on the two parent lead petitioners' lack of experience to themselves. For them, this is a direct quote, so it, so I'll rephrase a little bit. Petitioners' lack of experience, um, to operate and run the school, which is not what is proposed in the petition. The meeting never happened, which the district cited as support for denial. The district staff report is self-serving and one-sided. There was no discussion amongst the district board members at the meeting on December 9th, 2021 where the MCMS petition was denied and the video feed of the virtual meeting went blank for nearly 10 minutes during a break in the middle of the board's deliber, deliberations. The superintendent and each district board member prejudged the facts before the December 9th meeting and came prepared with written statements in opposition to the MCMS petition. Each of the statements listed on the previous slide includes a citation to the documentary record. However, the evidence referenced in the citation does not demonstrate how NVUSD's process for reviewing MCMS's petition was unfair. Two of the citations refer to documents that MCMS itself prepared, which make similar allegations but do not specify how or why the app complained of is procedurally unfair. An additional citation references a public comment made by a parent in the district but does not say why the comment is evidence that the NVUSD's actions were procedurally unfair. In another instance, the citations refer to 28 pages of the transcript from the NVUSD's board's December 9th, 22 meeting, 2022 meeting. The citation undermines MCMS's claim that there was no discussion among board members at that meeting and is not a specific citation. Also, MCMS's claims about the district's capacity interview are not supported by evidence. On November 3rd, 2021, NVUSD emailed MCMS explaining that they would not exclude other individuals from attending the meeting and that the purpose of the capacity interview for, was for the charter schools' leadership team to demonstrate knowledge of the petition and capacity to successfully implement it, and that therefore the district's questions would be directed to the petitioners. And just as a side note, capacity interviews are not a requirement of the petitioning process. Some authorizers do it, um, just to get to know the petitioners better and, and, and understand their capacity, but it is not a requirement of the petitioning process that's in Ed Code. Additionally, the fact that the board members had prepared statements which they read into the record does not demonstrate that the district did not consider the petition, the staff recommendations, or the MCMS's responses to the staff recommendations. CDE's review of procedural allegations against the county. MCMS's claims that the county board failed to proceed in the manner required by law when it failed to either grant the charter petition or timely adopt specific written factual findings to deny. Pursuant to Ed Code Section 47605B, the governing of the bo, governing board of the school district and/or county board of education shall either grant or deny the charter within 90 days of the receipt of the petition. MCMS asserts that its submission of its petition to the county on December 21, 2022 required NCBOE to grant MCMS's petition or adopt written findings to deny by March 21, 2022. The documentary record shows, and all parties agree, that NCBOE voted to deny MCMS's petition on March 15th, 2022 and adopted written factual findings on April 5th, 2022. And that all can be found in the documentary record and the citations cited there. Both, both NCBOE and NVUSD state that while MCMS, MCMS initially submitted its petition to the county on December 21, 2022, MCMS failed at that time to fulfill the requirements of Ed Code Section 47605K1A, which states the following, "At the same time the petition is submitted to the county board of education, the petitioner shall also provide a copy of the petition to the school district." The district and county provided ev, evidence along with their written oppositions, which established that MCMS did not submit, submit its appeal to both NVUSD and NCBOE pursuant to Ed Code Section 47605K1AI until January 5th, 2022. As the MCMS petition was not properly submitted in accordance with statute until January 5th, 2022, NCBOE's 90-day statutory timeline pursuant to Ed Code 47605B began on that date. NCBOE denied the MCMS petition on March 15th and adopted written findings supporting the denial on April 5th, 2022, which is within the 90-day timeline required in statute. Because of this, the CDE does not find any procedural violations and therefore does not find any abusive discretion. After reviewing the complete documentary record and supporting documentation submitted by the parties to this appeal, the CDE has determined that neither the NVUSD nor NCBOE abused its discretion in reaching their decisions to deny MCMS's charter petition. Therefore, the CDE recommends the SBE affirm NVUSD's and NCBOE's decisions to deny the MCMS charter petition. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Stephanie. Uh, at this point, I'm going to open the public hearing at 10:33 AM. We will first hear from petitioners representing Maya Thomas Charter Middle School. They will have 12 minutes to make their presentation. We will then hear from Napa Valley Unified School District and the Napa County Board of Education, who denied the charter appeal. The district and county will have a combined total of 12 minutes. After the presentation, we will open up the phone line for public comment from individuals who are not part of the presentation. Uh, petitioner, uh, you may begin.
Good morning, President Darling Hammond and board members, and thank you very much for hearing our appeal today. My name is Lauren Daly. Jolene Yee and I are the co-petitioners for Maya Comas Charter Middle School. Again, we thank you today for your time. Jolene, can you start the slides? Yes. The proposal for Maya Comas Charter Middle School, or MCMS, envisions a free neighborhood school that provides a small school setting for students for whom a large middle school is problematic. The plan is for a school culture steeped in social emotional learning, using tools like daily advisory and a project-based learning model to help students build lasting relationships and to work collaboratively. All students will have individualized learning plans and will assist in establishing their own educational goals. The school is planned to be diverse by design. It is located in downtown Napa, near two Title I schools, to be easily walkable and to serve, to service in an underserved neighborhood. The school is not designed to be a private school with public funds, nor is it designed to cater to a homogenous population, as you may hear from some callers. It is the exact opposite of that. I'd now like to turn it over to John Lemo. John?
Good morning, board members. Can, can everyone hear me okay? I'm hoping.
Yes.
Um, so the staff presentation I heard, um, is a little bit dismaying and, and sort of grossly misstates our appeal. There are so many abuses of process here, I can only focus on major ones, and I'm gonna focus on the county and its utter failure to, uh, follow the, the procedure in the statute. The presumption when a charter is being considered by a county on appeal or a district is that the, the agency shall not deny the petition unless it makes written factual findings specific to the particular petition, setting forth specific facts to support one of the statutory findings. There's confusing because there's two kinds of findings involved here. There's eight statutory findings called findings, which is the basis to deny a charter. And then if one of those is made by an agency, it has to support it with specific facts, uh, to support that finding. This has to happen at the same time. The board has to make these factual findings, these written factual findings in order to deny, in order to deny. That's the, that's the due process here. That's the key linchpin of the due process. You can't have due process if you make a statutory finding to deny and then cobble together the findings later. Um, as was stated to you by staff, you review now, uh, uh, these appeals for the abusive discretion. You've selected a, or CDE has selected a definition that nobody else uses, uh, but we're, we're stuck with it for, for today. There are hundreds and hundreds of cases for abusive discretion that cite a different standard, but what's, what's at, what's at core here is there has to be evidence in the record to support what the agency did, and the agency has to proceed in a procedurally fair manner. Uh, next slide, please. I'm gonna talk fast because I've only got a few minutes. There are multiple substantial abuses of discretion. Know that you, the state board, are the backstop here. You, uh, are the, the entity, uh, next slide, please, let's, let's move on. You, you are the agency, uh, that, that, that calls out an abusive discretion and sets the standard so agencies below will not act in an unfair, unfair way. I'm gonna focus on, on the county here. The substantial evidence in the record, and substantial evidence just means, uh, the basis for any arbitrary or capricious action. So there is, there is something called substantial evidence, and there's thousands of cases that describe it in the abusive discretion context. The county staff report leading up to this action, uh, on the appeal, um, was glowing. It said that the charter is comprehensive and detailed, that the budget is appropriate and viable, the petitioners have met all legal requirements, and there's a well-established need and demand for this charter. Next slide, please. There's a lot of the staff report about the timing and when timelines start on the appeal. There's no question that, and I'll tell you, it's a, a, a screen grab in a second. There's no question that the appeal was submitted to the county on December 21. True, a copy of the petition, not the entire appeal packet, was not submitted to the district until December 31. It's a new rule and, and we missed that. Uh, you'll hear from the county and district about, about, um, error, uh, that was an error. On March 15th, well, step back for a second. On February 28th, the county issued its first findings, which were in support of the charter. They didn't recommend approval, but they didn't recommend denial, and they said lots of great things about the charter. Um, on March 15th, it's indisputed that the board took action to deny, and it didn't adopt any written findings. That started our 30-day timeline to appeal. We had to file our appeal by April 14th to be in front of you. Not until April 5th did the, did the county staff cobble together their, their findings and present them to the board, um, nine days before our appeal deadline. That's unlawful, that's procedurally unfair. Next slide, please. The documentary record is clear that we submitted it on December 21st. This is a finding that the county made. This is from their April 5th finding. On December 21st, they received the petition. Period. Uh, next slide, please. On December twenty first, they received the petition. Period. Next slide, please. In relevant part, the the statute says we must provide a copy of the petition to the district at the same time we provided to the county, not our entire appeal packet that was provided later. But our petition was provided indisputably to the county, excuse me, to the district on December thirty first. So worst case, that's the start date. There are citations to the record for you right there. Next, please. They took action to deny. The county took action to deny this petition on March fifteenth. All that was made was this motion. I've quoted it here. That's the entirety of it. That's the entirety of the action that they took. There's no factual findings whatsoever, written or not. Next slide, please. The purported findings were drafted post hoc. They were not within the ninety day statutory timeline, but even so, they weren't even sufficient. They had different findings on February twenty eighth that were contrary to their April fifth findings. We agree with CDE's staff report that they denied the petition on March fifteenth and adopted the findings on April fifth. That in and of itself, if there was nothing else in the record, that demonstrates a violation of the process and timeline and this should be overturned. Next slide, please. The post hoc findings include many statements that are not supported by the record. And I want to say something about this. The staff said that we didn't cite to the record, but then they quoted the citations that we had. We just cited them at the end of our brief and there's nothing, there's nothing wrong with that. But the problem here is the absence of evidence in the record. We can't cite the things that don't exist. So many of the the facts that were relied on for the findings were stated by callers on March fifteenth. We had no opportunity to respond. That's that is substantially unfair. For example, there's no evidence whatsoever that my comments would substantially undermine existing services, academic offerings, or programmatic offerings. That's finding twenty one. There's nothing in the record about that. It's also false because there's another finding that they made that's the opposite of that. And I encourage you to look at the February twenty eighth findings and the pages I've cited here. Also, in the findings, there's a finding twenty four that said that the district would need to eliminate middle school program and elementary school music and physical physical education programs. There was no board discussion at the county of that whatsoever. It can't be a finding of the board that they deliberated and made that finding similar similar to twenty five saying there was no such discussion. Next slide. Myth of the harmless error. You're going to hear from the district and the county. They're going to say, oh, yeah, these were these were just harmless error violations. They really don't matter. Well, you've you've staked out your own definition of of abusive discretion. Harmless error exists in the ten ninety four point five judicial standard for abusive discretion. So if you want that standard, great, I'll take it. But anyway, the abuses here were not harmless. We were deprived our right to have the draft, the the findings that the county relied on published fifteen days in advance. They didn't do that. We were denied. They denied the charter on March fifteenth with no written or even spoken findings whatsoever. And you just tried to fix it. They tried to fix it weeks later with comments made at March fifteenth as evidence. It's an ambush is really what it is. And the findings were ratified just days before the appeal deadline. Next slide, please. Again, you're the backstop here to ensure a fair and lawful process. This is a high-quality petition. I'll just point to what the county board said and its staff of report of February twenty eighth. It's findings and report. There's blatant abuses here. If you don't reverse this, it's going to be mayhem at the district and county level. No one's going to follow process because nobody can ever win on appeal here. A reversal here will ensure that districts and counties will provide due process and follow the statutory procedure for would-be petitioners. But charters are supposed to be encouraged. That's forty seven six hundred of the statute, the most important guiding principle. Lauren, I'll turn it over to you.
So, John, I think I'm taking over. Thank you, President and esteemed members of the board. Lauren Daly and I have been described as just two moms trying to start a charter school, not competent to file this petition, but our resumes demonstrate otherwise. We've consulted with subject matter experts with decades of experience and expertise, and we drafted an exemplary one hundred and eighty seven page petition that were far more detailed and extensive than any other petition actually approved by the district. Despite our impeccable credentials, we have been chastised and maligned in an attempt to discredit us. Here are a few choice words from the hearing on December ninth. Dr. Masetti, we did not understand basic regulations and requirements. We had a lack of professionalism and incompetency. Trustee Riser, our petition read like sort of a hastily thrown together paper by like a freshman interested in majoring in education. Trustee Gracia, our budget was phony and we were fraudently attempting to inflate our income. These assertions were directly contradicted by the county staff report. When the district uncovered metadata for a school in Compton from a document template, trustee Gracia tried to blow the racial dog whistle stating, I don't know a lot of parents in the Napa Valley who would want to send their children to school in Compton using the Compton word fourteen times during his twenty minute presentation. I'm not sure that trustee Gracia is aware that Napa student demographics are similar to Comptons or that Compton Public Schools consistently rate higher than Napa on GreatSchools.org. It is clear that the district had no intention of giving us a fair shake. If they had, there would have been some pros mixed in with all the cons. But the entire staff presentation and the endless minutes of prepared speeches filled with vitriol, not a single person said a single positive comment about the charter. We thought we would have a fair shot at the county, but we did not. We heard that the superintendent had visited English learner families the week before and told them to call in and tell you and tell the county that we were white segregationists, taking public dollars for an elitist private school, and forty parents called in and did just that. After hours of this repeated message, we were not surprised by the result. Last month at the ACCS hearing, the commissioners got a taste of these theatrics, although this time I think we're actually called racist. Notably, one caller stated that the district had threatened county programs. If NCBOE approved their charter, even though the county did not approve our charter, my understanding is the district has full contracts with the county and will transfer national Napa Special Education Programs out of NCBOE. As you vote, please consider our families who've watched two moms stand up again and again, hearing after hearing, fighting for public education and what we got in exchange. We elected in public officials who called us names, questioned our intelligence and competence, and threatened to investigate us for made-up claims. They manipulated their constituents, people they are supposed to serve, by threatening to cut their programs and told them to call us racist. Thank you.
Thank you. If the presentation has concluded, we will hear from the Napa Valley District and the Board, County Board of Education. You combined have twelve minutes.
Can the petitioners stop sharing so that I can share our presentation? Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to present today. My name is Rabindranath Law. I'm the Assistant Superintendent of the Napa Valley Unified School District. Along with me today, I have Alex Sears, Legal Counsel for the Napa Valley Unified School District, and Jennifer Nix, Legal Counsel for the Napa County Board of Education. Next slide, please. The appeal to the state board lists five grounds and can be summarized as claim violation of the timeline, evidence to support the findings, and the district review process. Like the CDE staff report finds, the Napa Valley Unified School District and the Napa County Board of Education did not violate any procedures as part of the charter review process and therefore did not abuse their discretion. The process was fair and robust. Next slide, please. Upon receiving the petition, the district invited a team of fourteen staff members to review the petition with guidance from district legal counsel and the following departments: data, business services, enrollment, human resources, instructional services, operations, special education, student services, and technology. Next slide, please. The review team established the timeline, reviewed appropriate statutes, regulations, and resources such as the California Charter Authorizing Professionals Initial Charter Petition Toolkit, Charter School Accounting Best Practices Manual, listened to public testimony, utilized utilized an evaluation matrix, developed recommendations, and the Assistant Superintendent of Business Services and District Legal Counsel wrote findings of fact. As a side note, I'd like to point out that the review team went through every item in the California Charter Authorizing Professionals Initial Charter Petition Toolkit and documented each item. This documentation was included in the administrative record. Next slide, please. After a very fair, unbiased, and thorough review process, the Napa Valley Board of Education took action to deny the Maya Thomas Charter petition on December ninth, two thousand and twenty one. There were four findings for denial and nineteen pages of factual findings in support of denial. Contrary to the petitioner's statement, the response did not refute each and every factual finding by district staff. Additionally, petitioner's response to district staff findings and recommendations would receive less than two hours prior to the start of the December ninth board meeting. Next slide, please. The remainder of the the remainder of the presentation will be covered by district and county staff legal counsel. Alex, please continue.
Thank you. Petitioners' appeal submission, as well as their comments to this board, makes a number of assertions that portray the district's review process as unfair. However, as the CDE staff has correctly found, the evidence cited by petitioners does not demonstrate that Napa Valley Unified School District's review process was unfair. In other words, petitioners didn't provide citations to the record to support those assertions. CD's staff analysis found no evidence of procedural violations and therefore no abuse of discretion. In fact, the primary documents in the record and the additional evidence presented with the district's opposition show that the district's review process followed the law and that it was not arbitrary or biased. The evidence also shows that petitioners were given ample opportunity to respond to district staff's questions and to address the staff findings and recommendations at the district board meeting, and also that they were given unlimited time for their presentation to the district board. Next slide, please. With respect to the district's findings, CDE staff also found that petitioners failed to meet their burden to show that the district abused its discretion, and we agree with this conclusion. Just to summarize, the appeal challenged only one of the district's four statutory grounds for denial and only two of the twenty four factual findings supporting that ground. The remaining grounds for denial have gone unchallenged. Remember that only one statutory finding under four seven six oh five C, numbers one through eight, is sufficient to justify denying a charter petition. An appeal needs to show how each and every finding was not supported by the evidence, and this appeal fails to make that showing. Next slide, please. AB fifteen oh five is very specific in that once the district and the county have both made their decisions at the local level, those decisions should stand unless it can be proven that there was an abuse of discretion. Contrary to petitioner's counsel's contentions in this meeting, a quasi-legislative action such as approving or denying a charter school is not subject to the section ten ninety four point five administrative standard, administrative mandate standard on review. That's for a quasi-adjudicatory action. A quasi-legislative action is subject to a more deferential review standard, and under this standard, the petitioners must not must show not only that there was an abuse of discretion, but that they were prejudiced by the local agency actions that they challenge. Prejudice means that the challenged action itself resulted in a worse outcome than petitioners would have received otherwise. So even if petitioners could have shown a minor procedural violation, if it didn't change the outcome, it cannot justify reversal. This appeal presents no evidence to show how any action by either the district or the county board prejudiced the petitioners. For example, their challenge to the county board's timeline fails to show how the county's adoption of findings on April fifth resulted in a worse outcome, and they cannot make this showing because the outcome was the same whether the county board adopted findings on March fifteenth or on April fifth. I will turn the present the presentation over to Jennifer Nix now to discuss the county board's review in more detail.
Good morning. Turning to petitioner's arguments against the county board, the record is clear that the county board followed all procedural aspects of the Charter Schools Act in considering the appeal from Napa Valley Unified as to their decision and that the process was procedurally fair. As CDE staff found, the county board of education denied the Maya Thomas Charter Middle School petition and adopted supporting factual findings within the ninety day timeline. Petitioners submitted their appeal petition to the county superintendent of schools on December twenty first. However, they did not simultaneously submit their appeal petition to Napa Valley Unified School District as required by statute. Without that submission and notice to the to the local district, the county board did not have jurisdiction to hear the appeal as of December twenty first. The county did not sit on this issue. The county superintendent reached out to petitioners and let them know that they needed to submit their complete appeal to the Napa Valley Unified School District in addition to the county board, which they did on January fifth. Accordingly, the timeline started on that day. This is a really important procedural aspect, and it's not one that that the county board was able to just ignore, particularly in this case because the local school district had concerns that petitioners had changed their petition on appeal and that remand was necessary. Given the date of complete submission of the appeal, the record is clear that the county board took action to deny the petition and adopt factual findings in support of that denial within ninety days of the submission. The petitioners are making allegations to the contrary, but those allegations, they are not based in fact or law. So they're not based on the record before you. They're also not based in law. The county board followed what is a common procedure by directing staff to prepare findings that were in alignment with the record. They then reviewed those findings and had them attested to by the board president prior to having the full board ratify them. Those findings that were drafted and adopted did nothing more than reflect in writing the rationale that the board articulated on the record in the public hearing. The written record here does include the public hearing itself and does include all of the documentation that was submitted to the board that they reviewed for that public hearing. This process is permitted in law and it's permitted in county board policy, and there's nothing that is contrary to that process in the Charter Schools Act. The Charter Schools Act requires that the board make written factual findings, but it doesn't specify that those findings have to be adopted at the same meeting at which the decision is made or that the petitioners have a right to get copies of those findings fifteen days in advance. To to say otherwise would effectively require the county board to adopt a staff report, and it would take away the county board's discretion in making a decision, and it would take away the county board's discretion to disagree with the staff report. That's particularly problematic here because the county board of education doesn't actually have staff to make recommended findings, right? As you know, the county board and the county superintendent of schools are two separately elected bodies, and the county superintendent of schools runs the county office of education. I do also want to note that even had the county board exceeded the ninety day timeline, that timeline is not mandatory in the law. The the education code in section forty six, forty seven, six oh five subdivision key six specifically provides that the county board can act on the petition all the way through a hundred and eighty days after receipt of that petition. Moreover, and and I do think this is important, it's undisputed that this process did not actually harm petitioners. At no time did they contact anybody within the county office or the county board or legal counsel to raise concerns with the way the process was was rolling out, despite that they had been in contact with with legal counsel and with the county throughout the process regarding other procedural aspects. And also in in their petition appeal materials, they don't present any argument of harm or prejudice. Today, they did present three arguments with regard to harm or prejudice, but those those arguments also aren't borne out by the factual record. The findings were provided to them much in advance of April fifth, and they have given themselves a a date by which they had to appeal the decision. But that's not a date that that anybody has argued is the date they did have to actually appeal that decision. So there also was no harm from the procedure that the county board followed. Mr. Schultz, could I get the next slide, please? I also want to touch on on the allegation that's made in the appeal materials that the county board's findings were insufficient because this allegation is demonstrably false. The county board made twenty six detailed findings of it to support its decision. The findings included citations to specific facts in the record, and as CDE found, the petitioners are not arguing that the findings were arbitrary, capricious, or entirely lacking in evidentiary support. They don't actually challenge the evidentiary basis for the county board's findings. Instead, they argue regarding the weight that the county board gave to facts in the record, which is not a cognizable argument in this abusive discretion review. Next slide, please. So in conclusion, we are asking you to affirm the denials of the charter petition. Notably, the law permits the state board to affirm the determination of the school district's governing board or to affirm the county board or to affirm both, and that's that's in subdivision K two C. And I I listening to the Charter Schools presentation, their arguments are entirely against the the county board. So we do not believe that there is an argument of abusive discretion against either the local district or the county board of education. However, I urge you to consider that you can affirm one or the other decision or both. We do have representatives from both LEAs present to answer any questions that you have regarding this matter. Thank you for your time. We look forward to speaking with you if you have questions.
Thank you for those presentations. And at this point, we'll hear, we'll open the phone line for the public comment queue. So can we get the public comment slide up on the screen? Uh, so can we get the public comment slide up on the screen? Uh, public comment is limited to one minute and is for people who are not part of either presentation. Still looking for that public comment slide. There it comes. Members of the public wishing to provide comment may do so by calling the telephone number uh, and using the access code provided on the slide that is shown now. Uh, we encourage you to please state your name and affiliation for the record. Please remember to turn down the speaker volume of your computers if you are following the live feed. Speakers will be limited to one minute and speakers needing Spanish translation will be given two minutes to incorporate that translation. Uh, I'd like to ask the translator to provide the instructions in Spanish for callers needing translation of this speech. So is there any public comment?
Ahora abrimos la línea telefónica para la cola de comentarios públicos. Los comentarios públicos estarán limitados a un minuto y son para personas que no forman parte de ninguna de las presentaciones. Los miembros del público que desean hacer comentarios sobre este tema pueden hacerlo llamando el número de teléfono y utilizando el código de acceso proporcionado en la diapositiva que se muestra ahora. Les recomendamos que indique su nombre y afiliación para que conste. Recuerde bajar el volumen de alta voz de sus computadoras. Si está siendo esta transmisión en vivo, los oradores estarán limitados a un minuto cada uno. Los oradores que necesitan interpretación al español tendrán dos minutos. Hay alguien, algún comentario público?
Okay, uh, we will open up the phone line now. It looks like we have about seventeen callers in the queue. So, good morning caller. Please state your name and affiliation for the record. Uh, you have one minute. Your time starts now.
Good morning, um, Madam President and members. My name is Cassie Mancini, and I'm here on behalf of the California School Employees Association, urging the FBE to affirm the district and county board's decision to deny the Maya Comas Charter Middle School petition. CSCA wholeheartedly agrees with the staff recommendation. The staff report thoroughly unpacks each of the petitioner's claims and explains why they did not constitute an abuse of discretion or why the petitioner did not offer sufficient evidence of an abuse of discretion. So I won't restate those in my remarks. However, I will emphasize that the board, board should consider the intent of AB fifteen oh five when considering this appeal. The intent of the law was to give deference to local communities and local decision makers. For the state board to take the extreme step of overriding a local decision, an abuse of discretion must be so egregious that its consequences mean that but for that abuse, the charter would have been granted. That is clearly not the case here. Therefore, we urge the FBE to affirm the local decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
Hello, this is Hannah Henry from Napa. I am a parent of four children who have attended public school in Napa. I want to urge the board to affirm the decision of NVUSD and the county board um, in denying the Maya Comas petition. This is taking resources away from individuals, from the school district, from, um, potential students and families alone. Um, but beyond that, this has been thoroughly vetted and reviewed. I have been part of some of those reviews, and it, it is unfair. The accusations made against NVUSD are, are wholly unfair. A tremendous amount of work is being done to listen to the community and create K through eight programs, um, a, a, arts, um, influenced, um, bilingual program for middle schools. There's independent study. There are plenty of options, and we should be devoting our energy to enriching those options and supporting our school system. This
Thank you, your time is up.
Already taken enough time.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
My name is Kim Smith, and I'm a community member and a parent in Napa. I have two children who are in high school in Napa right now. One is at New Tech. I want to appreciate the board hearing this appeal. I'm calling to voice my support for Maya Comas Charter Middle School for a few reasons. We need this innovative model in Napa. They're embracing the science of learning and development in a way the district is not able to do, given their fiscal situation. They're going to have a smaller learning community where children are seen and known, which is important. My daughter's gay. Both of my children need this sort of smaller diverse environment. They won't benefit from Maya Comas, but I want other community members to. They're going to have a later start, individual learning plans, all kinds of things the district cannot offer. I believe NVUSD did abuse their discretion. They defined community solely on the basis of a fiscal impact that would change the employment of their employment roles. If parents and students choose Maya Comas, the school, of course, will also employ teachers. So what would happen is teachers might move from the roles of Napa Unified over to the charter school, and those teachers are incredibly important.
Thank you, your time is up.
Still remain employed.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
Hi, my name is Elson. I'm a parent and a community member of Napa. I was a member of one of the schools that was closed. Um, it had a model very similar to Maya Comas. We were not consulted whatsoever in the decision to close our school. Um, this was a very important SEL model that was created twenty years ago, had a huge following, had a huge, um, waiting list, and there was absolutely no compromise whatsoever with this district. And as a result, I know over a hundred families that pulled their kids, which resulted in a huge loss of ADA, of parents who went to private instead of saving our public schools and keeping them strong. So if you're talking about financial or fiscal responsibility, that was not followed in this case. There were other options. There was more compromise that could have been said. And they, you guys not listening to the parents, is that your peril? These people are bailing on public
Thank you.
Right and left in this community.
Thank you, your time is up. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. Your time starts now.
My name is Justin Godey. As a parent of NVUSD students, I ask you deny the Maya Comas petition. You may hear many today talk about the impact that this charter would have on our children. I'm going to be honest with you. I'm not concerned about my children. I'm white, I'm middle-class, and I'm privileged that I can afford to supplement my children's education. Regardless of the outcome, my children will be fine. I'm here to talk about the children who are not being represented, about the families that can't take time off on a Thursday to speak here. This charter is not being proposed by struggling working class and largely Latinx families that make up most of this district. This charter is being pushed forward by other privileged, white, middle-class fam, families like myself, families that can supplement their children's education. This charter would take money from an already struggling district in order to recreate services for one small demographic, taking from the many to give to the few by replicating systems the district has already created. This charter is not in the best interest of my community as a whole. Please deny this appeal. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
Uh, good morning, President Darling Hammond, Vice President Glover Woods, and esteemed board members. This is Gina Plate on behalf of the California Charter Schools Association. I am eager to express our support of Maya Comas Charter Middle School and respectfully ask, as outlined in our letter submitted Friday, that you reverse the local denial of this program. These petitioners, along with the students and families they intend to serve, have been the subject of a disregard of their rights at the local level. We are in the early stages of working through the implications of AB fifteen oh five. Given that, this body has the obligation to offer every possible consideration when faced with students and families that are asking for educational options beyond what is currently available to them. We respectfully ask that you reverse the local decision to deny Maya Comas Charter Middle School. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now. Caller, ending in the last four digits, five, four, two, two. You are live. Please start your public comment now.
Oh, yes. Uh, thank you very much. Uh, this is Jerry Brown. Uh, as you know, I was governor of California, but also attorney general. Uh, and I followed with great interest, uh, the legal, uh, discussions here. And it is disappointing that the educational quality and educational opportunity is now mired in legal wrangling, uh, among the lawyers. Uh, this case is pretty clear to me. Uh, the board, you're the Board of Justice and the Board of Inclusion. This is a great charter. I've read the report. Uh, it's unique. It's going to have individualized learning. It's sensitive to low-income people, and charges about racism are just, uh, outrageous. So, uh, the bottom line here legally, the denials below are arbitrary. Arbitrary is what abuse of discretion is at its essence. This is a good school. The county staff, uh, noted, uh, how valuable it will be and the cost to the district. Over ten years, uh, they're speculating that instead of, uh, going down seventeen percent because of the fall off in ADA, it may go down nineteen percent, ten years. Uh, and yet, uh, that's a very small amount over a long period of time, giving the di, the district a lot of ways to adjust. Look, the charter schools were created to create, uh, stimulus to the public schools, to create options for families. Here you have some active, uh, parents in Napa trying to do right by their kids bringing in new technology, small school, small classes, very individual. This is a great charter. If you guys
Apologies, Governor, but the time is up.
Down. It's the death knell of charter schools. Please reverse this really bad decision. It's arbitrary, and I'm confident the courts will app, hold you judgment. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now. Next caller.
Hi, this is Claire Crawford.
Go ahead and start your public comment.
This is Claire Crawford. Within the public interest, AB fifteen oh five allows districts to make decisions about what is in the interest of the most students in their jurisdiction. Napa County advised NVUSD to take steps to remain fiscally solvent, including addressing the high cost of small schools. To support a stable educational system for all students, the district made the difficult decision to close their smallest middle school, River Middle. The MCMS supporters are clear their intent is to recreate this option for a small number of students. River serves by far the lowest percentage of high-need students, serving significantly lower percentages of socio-economically disadvantaged and homeless students, English learners, and students with disabilities than all other middle schools in the district overall. River maintained a majority-white student body in a district with less than thirty percent white student population, only moving the needle slightly in the last years under district management. River has significantly lower percentages of Latino students in a majority Latino district. The petitioners are trying to make this confusing, but it is very clear. Authorizers may consider the negative impact that potential
Thank you.
Have on all students
Thank you, your time is up.
Given a clear negative impact.
Thank you very much. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one mon, one minute. Your time starts now.
Hello?
Hello?
This is Bueno, hello?
Hello, please start your public comment now. I would ask that the translators, please, uh, translate into Spanish.
Yes.
Hola, buena, uh, buenos dias. Mi nombre es Britany. Le pido que por favor diga una oración y después toma una pausa y después, uh, permíteme que le traduzca. Uh, puede empezar con su nombre y su afiliación, por favor?
Patty Terrones.
Señora, está ahí?
Sí, soy yo Patty Terrones.
Eres ya Patty Terrones? Sí, siga, por favor. De su comentario.
Bueno, buenos. Uh, tengo mi traductora. Aquí tengo alguien que me traduzca, pero voy a decir bueno. Buenos dias, mi nombre es Patty Terrones, residente y madre de estudiantes públicas del distrito de Napa. Mi voto es un no para la apertura de la escuela Maya Camas. Tenemos que ser conscientes del impacto educativo y económico para nuestras escuelas públicas del distrito de Napa. Abrir la escuela Maya Camas para estudiantes exclusivos me parece un capricho egoísta que solo afectaría a programas y ayudas a estudiantes públicos. Mi voto como padre hispano es un no rotundo que está en contra de la discriminación socioeconómica.
Good morning. My name is Patty Terrones, resident and mother of students in the public school system in Napa. My vote is no in regards to opening, uh, Maya Camas School. We need to be conscious in, on the negative impact, uh, on the education and economics that this school will af, how this school will affect public schools within the district of Napa. Opening a school, the school Maya Camas, for students only with exclusive, um, exclusive privileges, um, looks to me like a very, um, childish and, um, selfish, um, tantrum. It would only affect the programs that we currently have with our students in public schools. My vote is no. Uh, as a Hispanic mother, I keep saying no in regards to opening this school, and I'm against any socioeconomic discrimination.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now. I would ask, um, for the translators to also please, uh, translate into Spanish.
I am here. Puede decir su nombre?
Mi nombre es Irma Sanchez.
My name is Irma Sanchez.
Sí, uh, buenos dias. Mi nombre es Irma Sanchez, y mis hijos acuden a una escuela pública. Son dos niños con necesidades sociales. Si abren otra escuela, van a quitar fama a nuestra escuela, y eso afectaría a mis hijos, a los programas. Para que ellos tengan
I'm so sorry. I'm, I'm gonna ask her to come closer to the mic. Señora Sanchez, puede acercarse un poco más al micrófono, por favor? Sí, un poquito más cerca y por favor, siga. Disculpa.
Sí, mi comentario es que soy, um, en contra de que abran una escuela Maya Camas, porque eso afectaría a mis hijos, ya que ellos son niños con necesidades sociales. Y no que se les pueda
I don't agree that you opened a Maya Camas school because it would affect my children. Uh, I'm sorry, the rest was a little bit far. I'm gonna have to ask her to get off of speaker. Señora, puede quitarse el speaker, por favor, y hable directamente al micrófono?
Díganme.
That was my comment, she said.
Okay, thank you so much. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
Hello?
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 Sí, yo soy su intérprete. Habla español?
Hello?
Is the translator on the line?
Hello? Puede hablar en voz alta, por favor?
Hola?
Necesito que se acerque más y hable en voz alta, por favor. Diga su nombre. No lo escucho.
Okay, um, I believe that we have, the caller has dropped. Um, we will move on to the next caller. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
Hello?
Hello? Habla español?
Hola, mi nombre, sí.
Okay.
Tengo mi traductora.
Diga, 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 si yo soy su traductor, su intérprete, hable en español. Y pues, diga su nombre, después diga una pausa, después lo que usted va a decir, pero por favor trate no de hablar muy rápido para que pueda hacer la interpretación.
Okay. Mi nombre es María Herrera. Y estoy aquí el día de hoy el día de hoy para solicitar su apoyo para no la apertura de Maya Camas. Ya que esto dañaría
Hello, I am here today to ask not to, uh, I am against the opening of Maya Cama.
Ya que esto dañaría todo nuestro sistema educativo. Que tanto trabajo, tanto trabajo ha resultado. Que dañaría a nuestro sistema educativo.
Okay, this will destroy our, uh, educational system.
Ya que, ya que tanto trabajo ha resultado estos últimos dos años.
We've done a lot of work the last two years.
No necesitamos otra escuela.
We do not
Mi hijo tiene una IT.
My son has, ¿qué es lo que tiene?
Una IT.
An ID?
ID. Hasta ahorita-
Oh.
Hasta ahorita ha tenido todos los servicios-
Up until now, he has used all of the services from the district.
La escuela Mayacamas apoyaría al menos, no más cuatrocientos alumnos, y el distrito tiene dieciséis mil alumnos. No a Mayacamas.
Mayacamas would only support four hundred students, and the district has sixteen hundred students. I say no to Mayacamas.
Okay, thank you very much. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now. Caller ending with the last four digits, nine, five, three, eight. You are live. Please start your public comment now.
Good morning, President Darwin Hammond, members of the California Board of Education. My name is Pat Andrew Jennings, and I serve as the Assistant Superintendent of Instructional Services for the Napa Valley School District. In the fall of 2021, my staff participated in a comprehensive and thorough review of the Maya Comas charter petition. I am confident in the rigorous review completed by the NVUSD staff, which determined that the practical implementation of the stated educational methodologies was not well described in the petition. Additionally, NVUSD has a variety of middle school options to meet the needs of diverse learners, including three comprehensive middle schools, one smaller language and cultural arts integration middle school, and two TK through eighth grade schools. As a result of our findings, we recommend denial of the petition on the grounds that the educational program set forth in the petition was not reasonably comprehensively described and was a duplication of district programming. I respectfully request the State Board of Education deny the appeal before then. Thank you.
Thank you. And we are going-
I have a quick request. Sorry, this is an interpreter, and I was asked to make a quick announcement in Spanish for those who could not be heard properly, if that's okay, if I may?
Please go ahead. Thank you.
Okay, I was asked to say, cualquier persona que ha tenido problemas con la interpretación en español, por favor encuentre un lugar donde puede hacer la llamada de nuevo, una área donde esté un poco más callado para que le podemos escuchar para su comentario público. Gracias.
Thank you very much. Okay, next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now. Caller ending with the last four digits, four, one, seven, two. You are live. Please start your public comment now.
Hola, buenos tardes, mi nombre es María Evangelista. No Mayacamas afectaría a nuestros estudiantes académicamente. Tómenos en cuenta las personas que somos del condado de Napa. Esta apertura no es necesaria. Enfóquense en los estudiantes que ya están en nuestras escuelas, no Mayacamas.
Hello, my name is Maria. Opening Mayacamas would definitely affect our students. It would affect our community as a whole. We ask that you please don't open it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now. Caller ending the last four digits, two, four, four, two. You are live. Please start your public comment.
Hello, llamador, ¿habla español?
Okay, I think they have either dropped off. We'll move on. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
My name is Heidi Zapay, NVUSD parent. As an involved NVUSD parent, I have followed this charter application process from the beginning. And from the beginning, it was clear that the charter does not propose to do anything new or novel that is not already provided to our students. In fact, it would unfairly pull significant resources away from the sixteen thousand students in the district, including my own children, to support just a hundred or so kids with a quasi-special program. There are duplicate social, emotional programs and small school environments already in the district at the middle school level. I am worried that this proposed charter does not serve the best needs of our community as a whole, and the result would be other programs and other schools could be impacted. My assessment is that the Napa Valley Unified School District and Napa County Board of Education both did the right thing by denying the charter, did so within their scope. It is clear that the CDE staff report completely agrees that the district and county did not act in any way that abused their discretion when they both denied the charter. I hope you will consider these facts in making your decision to affirm the denial of the charter. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
Hi, my name is Gail Young, and I am president of Napa Valley Educators Association. I'm a teacher and a parent of two students who have graduated from Napa Valley Unified School District and have successful careers. Please deny this petition. There was no abuse of discretion by the district or the county. Both district and county agreed the approval of this school would have a negative fiscal impact and community impact. Please follow the intent of AB 1505 and deny this petition. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
Hi, my name is David T. Gracia, trustee for NVUSD. We followed a rigorous process, and staff did an impressively thorough review of the charter application. The petitioners in contrast were not impressive in their presentation. They pre-recorded their presentation and didn't speak much at the meeting, remaining mostly silent. They refused to meet with district staff and submitted a twenty-page document to the board by email about one and a half hours before the meeting we were set to decide the petition. Similarly, the petitioners were treated by NCOE with velvet gloves, and staff bent over backwards to give them every opportunity to succeed, even going so far as to have staff not make a recommendation to the board. Still, the petition was defeated. I ask that you uphold the decisions of both NVUSD and NCOE. There was no abuse of discretion, and petitioners were treated fairly at both levels.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
Hello, this is Marisa. And, y soy Marisa Badilla y tengo un traductor.
Tiene traductor?
Tengo, sí.
Okay.
Okay. Yo tengo un hijo que estudió en el distrito de Napa como uno de los mejores estudiantes y fue aceptado por una de las mejores universidades del país, Berkeley. Ahora él está estudiando su postgrado. Él es un fruto del distrito de Napa. Él es maestro en una de las escuelas del distrito donde también está doctor de educación especial en el distrito de Napa. Yo no estoy de acuerdo en abrir Mayacamas, ya que tenemos una nueva opción en Unidos Middle School donde se practica una filosofía de cariño que significa cuidar el sentido de pertenencia, sentirse como en casa, y nuestros estudiantes necesitan esto para su mente. No apoyo Mayacamas. Equidad para todos.
Hello, my name is Marisa Badilla. I have a son that studied at NVUSD. As one of the best students of the district, he was accepted in one of the best universities in the country, UC Berkeley. He is now studying his masters. He is a result of the education he received at NVUSD. He is now teaching at schools in the district where he also acts as an interpreter and a bridge for special ed. I do not agree to the opening of Mayacamas Middle School. We have now a great new option, which is Unidos Middle School, where they practice a philosophy of cariño, which means caring for the student's feeling of belonging, where they want students to feel welcome at home and safe. That is what our students need. I do not support Mayacamas opening. Equidad para todos, equity for all.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. One minute. Your time starts now.
Bueno, bueno, bueno. Bueno, ah, bueno, este, buenos días. Mi nombre es Rosario Morales.
Hello, good morning, my name is Osorio Morales.
Sí, yo tengo mi intérprete.
Oh, okay. She has her own interpreter.
Okay, thank you.
Sí.
Please proceed.
Hola. Hay que esforzar diariamente, enfocar ese dinero a programas que nuestros niños les benefician. No necesitamos abrir otras escuelas. Mis hijos, mis dos hijos están, este, en la escuela Willow, y ahí reciben, este, clases, este, de aprendiz de inglés. Entonces si abren otra escuela, nos van a quitar, este, esas ayudas. Entonces, no, este, no queremos que se abra la escuela. De Mayacamas.
Hi, we have to focus these dollars on programs that benefit our students, not opening another school. My two daughters are English learners at Willow School, and they receive everything they need as English learners. I am not in favor of Mayacamas opening.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
Steve Green, parent. Both the district and county boards of education told NVUSD that to preserve programming, it had to close inefficient small schools to avoid state receivership because of falling revenues from declining enrollment. NVUSD did that. It was painful. American Canyon gave up a promised new middle school. Napa lost small elementary and middle schools. NVUSD is fiscally solvent, which saved programming. The Maya Comas proponents want to force NVUSD to authorize a duplicative, inefficient small school. Small classes, smaller middle school setting duplicated by K-8 Napa. Programs in social-emotional learning duplicated, all duplicated. District conferences overall, and our American Canyon Middle School in particular, offer better education than what's proposed. Maya Comas- our American Canyon kids and degrade their educations. Please vote no. Do not degrade our kids' learning, and in all respect, Jerry Brown doesn't know what he, doesn't know our community.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
Good morning, California Board of Education. My name is Norma Ortiz. I am a parent of an eighth grader at Redwood Middle School. A rigorous, grand, unique opportunity within NVUSD that serves many students in our community. Today's conversation should not be in any way political. All students should have an opportunity to receive the education of their choice, whether it be in public schools or charters. Being California, one of the most prosperous states in our country financially speaking, the California Department of Education should continue to work closely to a lot more funding, resources for programs, services, and instructions to address the learning gaps and needs, especially of socio-economic disadvantaged impacted students such as English language learners, special education students, and foster youth. Quality variety of educational opportunities. As already stated in previous board meetings, I am not against charter schools. Based on the information provided, submitted, which is part of the record, it is my understanding, based on my interpretation of the facts, it is not the best timing to approve it. I sincerely hope the right decision is reached today-
Thank you.
-and that we continue to build community and fairness to all.
Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
Hello? Yo soy, represento a los padres de la, 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 mi hijo es un mi carnal.
No se escucha.
Sí, yo lo escucho.
No lo escuchamos.
Yo sí, yo se lo escucho, el montrador, ¿me escuchan?
Usted tiene un traductor, un intérprete personal ahí?
Sí, yo tengo un intérprete.
Pero si puede encontrar una mejor señal, porque no lo podemos escuchar muy bien aquí.
Okay, a ver si hay mejora en la comunicación.
Ahí está. Por favor, comience de nuevo.
Okay. A todos. Yo soy Roberto Hernández y represento a los padres de habla hispana de Canyon Middle School. No considero que la población estudiantil va en decremento. Y abrir, no necesitamos abrir más escuelas, sino al contrario, ocupamos, poner nuestro mayor esfuerzo para mejorar las escuelas actuales. Y si bien la educación que reciben algunos estudiantes no creen que sea la indicada para sus hijos, existen instituciones privadas que tal vez satisfagan sus expectativas. No a Mayacamas.
Hello, my name is Roberto Hernández and represent the Spanish-speaking parents at American Canyon Middle School. In my, in my opinion, Maya Comas from the viewpoint has, excuse me, in my opinion, the district currently has declining enrollment, and Maya Comas would be a consideration that I would make to open. It is not necessary to open more schools. To the contrary, we need to put better efforts into our current schools. If the current education that students are receiving, by, that students are receiving, other parents feel is not adequate, then there are private institutions that can satisfy those expectations. No to Mayacamas.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
My name is Marie Diet. I'm a parent and trauma-informed healthcare provider in Napa. As stated before, NVUSD has and continues to create harm in the community by working persistently to block Maya Comas from opening. The environment Maya Comas strives to provide is desperately needed in our community. NVUSD shows a blatant pattern of unnecessarily worthy, financially driven, and unethical behavior which necessitates this appeal. They use threat, spread rumors, promote community structure, and overlook community needs. Additional evidence to this claim is the recent closure of an extremely unique and valued veteran special education program for preschoolers. NVUSD has absorbed these children and their financial benefit into their own program despite doing any of the ethical preparation needed to make the transition like this. They don't listen to the parents of the children who these programs serve. They blatantly stated that they didn't care if they didn't have to support it because they didn't have to legally. That says a lot about the way NVUSD functions, and it is not for the benefit of the children or parents to whom it serves.
Thank you, your time is up. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
Hola, buenas, mi nombre es Cindy Ramírez. Soy mamá de doce estudiantes del distrito de Napa y tengo traductor. Nuestro distrito alberga a más de dieciséis estudiantes con programas de multilingüe, educación especial, apoyo escolar después de clases, etc. Dieciséis estudiantes impactarán nuestra sociedad. Dieciséis mil estudiantes, perdón, nuestra, que estudiantes impactarán nuestra sociedad con un mejor nivel educativo. Serán mejores hijos, esposos, padres, y ciudadanos. Doscientos cincuenta, trescientos, trescientos, doscientos estudiantes de charter no impactarán una sociedad y limitará las oportunidades que ya tienen nuestros más de dieciséis mil estudiantes. No necesitamos que cierren estas oportunidades sino potencializarlas. No apoyo Mayacamas. Inclusión, no exclusión.
Hi, my name is India Zámez, and I am providing- More than sixteen thousand students, where the district supports multi-language learners, special education students after school. Sixteen thousand students will impact the community because they will have a higher education level. They will be better students, parents, and citizens. Two hundred and fifty to three hundred charterers is- limited opportunities that our own sixteen thousand students will have. We don't need- to make better the opportunities for our children. Inclusivity and not exclusion. I do not support Maya Comas.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
Hola, mi nombre es Silvia Valdez y tengo mi intérprete. Buenos días. Ah, pues mi comentario es, ¿por qué no abrir otra escuela en el condado? Que ya se han cerrado varias aquí. Es importante enfocarnos en dieciséis mil estudiantes. ¿Por qué quieren agregar, segregar a tanto niño solo por algo innecesario? Que va a costar bastante al distrito y a nuestras familias. No Mayacamas.
My name is Sylvia. Why open another school in the county if we have had to close many other schools? It is important to focus on all of the sixteen thousand students currently in the district. Why separate or segregate so many children just for something unnecessary that will have a big cost to our families and the district? No to Mayacamas.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
Do you have a translator or do you need a translator?
Ah, no, I don't need, I don't need a translator, thank you. And thank you for your interest in opening Maya Kamas in our county, but we don't need it. We have great schools that are no classes discriminatory in elities. Here are simply seen a place, not of the best interest for our students. It is important to leave behind political and monetary interests. Here is important to take a 10,000 students, not 250 to 350 students. Please, Maya Kamas. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
As board president of the NVUSD Board of Education, I would like to highlight that this charter petition was denied for very specific factual findings, including the community impact and inaccurate financial projections. There are ethical components to financial decisions. There was no abuse of discretion and emotional pleas are not facts. It is our collective responsibility to create equitable environments for all of our students. This charter does not do so. The dilutive effect an additional school has on a declining enrollment district is akin to tightening public fund dollars. Reduction or elimination of resources and programming for thousands of middle school students is legitimate impact. The charter would serve a narrow portion of public school students. The composition of petition signatures does not represent the unduplicated count they have tried to recruit but need to validate their revenue projections. This charter does not mirror our community. We need to thoughtfully consider if this charter with a high-risk profile will adequately serve children. And if the school is not successful, the reality is the children absorb the impact.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
I have read the opposition to the proposal and have been listening to the lawyers talk about timelines and disrespect the petitioners. It seems very strange to me that no one references the kids, their education, or their mental health. Maya Kamas is embracing the science of learning and development. My kids thrive with smaller learning communities. Aren't we supposed to be in this for the kids? They need options that work for them. Please support their, this school for the children. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
My name is Holly Zacony. I have two children attending school in the NAPA School District, a daughter in 12th grade and a son in 6th grade. Both are in dual-language immersion programs. As an NVUSD parent, I'm asking that you deny the Maya Kamas charter petition. My kids, along with 16,000 other NAPA students, will be negatively impacted. Losing 300 students to a charter school will greatly affect the school district's budget. The last thing my kids and other NAPA students need right now, after some academic losses due to the pandemic, is to lose some programs related to dual immersion and the performing arts because of budget cuts. If you approve this petition, my kids, along with their friends at school, are in danger of losing some of their educational experiences that are important to their future and their academic successes. This charter is definitely not in the best interest of our NAPA community. Thank you for your serious consideration.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
My name is Teri Lynn Rosetti and I am the executive director of Special Education for Napa Valley Unified School District. I have concerns with the charter application based upon the vagueness of the plan with regards to meeting the needs of students identified with disabilities. The plan references seeking admittance to Acelpa and then states that it would be its own LEA. However, the only special education job identified was that of a special education teacher. This leaves out many key IEP team members who are necessary to meet the needs of this group of students. In addition, the plan lacks specificity to distinguish between the needs of students with disabilities as opposed to the needs of the multilingual learner. It outbecades only 45 minutes daily in totality to meet the needs of this group of students. This is not sufficient. Finally, the plan does not allow any flexibility for students with more intensive disabilities, such as those who require additional instruction for mental or behavioral health needs, or for those with low incidence disabilities, all of which there are high numbers within the Napa Valley community. I recommend that you deny this application.
Thank you. Your time is up. Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
Good morning. David Chappier from CSCA, representing classified school employees in NAPA and across California and co-sponsors of AB 1505. You've heard a lot about the merits or demerits of the proposed charter, but as you know, that's not the question today. As you've heard from your staff, this is a hearing about whether there was abuse of discretion. For procedural errors to rise to the level of abuse of discretion, such errors would have to be so egregious as to amount to procedural unfairness. In this case, your staff found no procedural violations based on the requirements of the law. Therefore, if you trust the analysis of your staff as I do, you should not reverse the decisions of the local boards on these grounds. MCMS also alleges that factual findings of the local elected officials were insufficient to deny the charter. Even if you take that argument on its face, it is not the state board's role to weigh whether the evidence is sufficient. As your staff made clear, in order to find abuse of discretion, you'd have to find that the evidentiary record was entirely lacking, meaning there are no facts supporting the school district's conclusions. The petitioning charter has not even made that allegation. They therefore cannot meet the abuse of discretion standard and both school districts' decisions should be affirmed. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
Good morning. My name is Michael Jubah and I am a classroom teacher representing the California Teachers' Association. The primary purpose of AB 1505 was to return control of charter schools authorizing to local school districts. CDE staff stated on page four of the item that based on CDE's review of the appeal and the documentary record, Maya Kamas has not met the burden of detailing with specific citations to the documentary record how Napa Valley Unified or NAPA County Board of Education abused their discretion in the denial of the charter petition. The district and the county board both acted in accordance with the law in denying the charter petition. We urge SBE to support the CDE's recommendation to affirm Napa Valley Unified's and NAPA County Board's decision to deny the Maya Kamas charter petition. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
Hello, it's Eric Premack with the Charter Schools Development Center. If it's one thing we're learning today is that we're all navigating some very poorly drafted appeal statutes without clarity about some key terms, processes, and standards. Notwithstanding this lack of vital clarity, the rather glaring procedural errors by both the district and county boards clearly violated the key provisions of the statute in question here. Given these huge errors, we believe that the state board is obliged to make a finding that an abuse of discretion clearly occurred at both the district and county levels. We also believe the charter petition has considerable merit as affirmed by county staff and that the denial at the local level should be reversed. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now. Caller with the last four digits, 3800, you are live. Please start your public comment now.
Hi, my name's Alan Cameron. I have family members who are graduates of the Napa Valley Unified School District and I would like to lend my voice in support of the charter school application. I agree with Jerry Brown and it's a great opportunity with the new school to introduce new innovations and technology, which are moving very rapidly. California, of course, is leading in these areas and the charter school would provide opportunities to use that new technology. There's a big need caused by the pandemic and lots of innovation to recover from the effects of the pandemic and there's federal funding available to support innovations in school safety and new technology. So I'd like to support the charter school idea. My name again is Alan Cameron. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. Your time starts now. You have one minute. Caller with the last four digits, 6535, you are now live. Please start your public comment now.
Yes, good morning. Can you hear me?
You can.
Okay, great, thank you. Yes, good morning. My name is Julia Pelayes and I am here on behalf of Shear Elementary School along with the rest of NVUSD community in support of not approving the Maya Kamas charter school. Shear Elementary School is our home. My daughter's a 7th grade, currently a 7th grader and has been there since kinder. My son graduated from Shear Elementary School. I respectfully disagree because I believe it will have a detrimental impact for our NVUSD students since it does not serve the best interest of the entire community. I truly believe that it does not foster inclusiveness and diversity. The other, the other piece to this is also it will divert resources away from school and NVUSD students, it will duplicate services that are being offered.
Thank you. Your time is up. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
I'm sorry, we're unable to hear you. Could you please state your name for?
Please speak louder. Yes, I can. Yes, I can.
Hello.
I'm sorry, we're unable to hear you. Could you please state your name for?
Please speak louder. Yes, I can. Yes, my name is Evangelina Hernandez and I have a translator. Yes, can I speak? Yes, we can. Yes, hello. My name is Evangelina Hernandez and, well, not to Maya Kamas. Why do we need to open another school if we are closing schools for lack of enrollment? It is just not logic. By opening another school, the NVUSD would be left with less resources since those resources will follow the students leaving the district. I do not agree. I believe it's unfair to care for the, for the well-being of some students and not look for the well-being of all students in the district. No to Maya Kamas.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
President Darlene Hammond and members of the California State Board of Education. My name is Monica Ready and I serve as the Director of Curriculum Instruction and English Learner Services for NVUSD. As a member of the NVUSD Charter Review Team, I review the educational program with specific attention to EL services as NVUSD is composed of 22.6% of English learners. As stated in the NVUSD findings of fact, the petitioners are demonstrably unlikely to successfully implement the educational program outlined, especially as it pertains to ELs. Year one and two of implementation of the petition lack significant attention to ELs, expecting the head of school to coordinate EL services on top of their job duties, yet the job description for the head of schools does not require background in EL services. Additionally, this is an unrealistic expectation in year one and two of the job. Second, GLAD is a main strategy for addressing the needs of ELs, yet the petitioners do not address GLAD in the professional development plan. GLAD training is seven to 10 days, yet the PD plan is 10 days with 16 pedagogical methods, which is an unreasonable and unrealistic staff expectation. Lastly, the EL reclassification and program monitoring system fails to provide a process, nor does it provide detail regarding the tools and training that will be used. Thank you for your careful consideration of the needs of all students and families within NVUSD by upholding the CDE staff recommendation and denial of the appeal.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
Hi, my name is Alicia Kronbeck. I'm a parent of a NAPA student and also a resident of NAPA County. I'd like to say that bully will never say they're a bully. When a bully comes from a position of power, it's harder for those being bullied, in this case, MCS's petition, to prove the behavior. I believe strongly the proposed MCM, MCMS school is a viable option that is both fiscally responsible and a diverse school that replaces both traditional and charter public options that have been stripped away in the last five years, including a walkable neighborhood school that serves primarily EL students. I respectfully request that the board approve the petition for a charter school, the MCMS charter school in NAPA. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now. Caller ending with the last four digits, 3715, you are now live. Please start your public comment.
Yes, I can. Yes, we can. Yes, my name is Irma Sanchez and I have my own translator. Yes, my, my children attend a public school. I have two boys with special needs. If you open Maya Kamas, it will take away funding from public schools. That will affect my kids' learning and the programs that they have access to, to keep them on a good academic level besides the support that they receive with their special needs. I am not in favor of opening Maya Kamas as it will only help 300 students. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record.
I have read the opposition to the proposal and have been listening to the lawyers talk about timelines and disrespect the petitioners. It seems very strange to me that no one references the kids, their education, or their mental health. Maya Kamas is embracing the science of learning and development. My kids thrive with smaller learning communities. Aren't we supposed to be in this for the kids? They need options that work for them. Please support their, this school for the children. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
Yes, I can. Yes, we can. Yes, I can. Yes, I have my own interpretation. My name is Elba Márquez, a mother of three students in the district of Napa. NVUSD does have and provide a small school setting for middle schoolers. It's a TK through eighth program in Brown Valley and Shear. NVUSD also has a large amount of social, emotional support within their schools. They have family resource centers, wellness centers. There's also an emotional toolkit that is implemented in every school. We offer community circles during school class and for middle schoolers and high schoolers, there's an advisory class. It is important that the funds that we do have are implemented in the current program. And this idea that Maya Kamas will offer something different that is not already in place within NVUSD is a lie. It will only be able to support a small amount of the community or the rest of the community if they can only support less than 400 students. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now.
So NVUSD, oh, I'm sorry, my name is Elba Márquez and I am the parent of three students within the school, NVU School District. NVUSD does have and provide a small school setting for middle schoolers. It's a TK through eighth program in Brown Valley and Shear. NVUSD also has a large amount of social, emotional support within their schools. They have family resource centers, wellness centers. There's also an emotional toolkit that is implemented in every school. We offer community circles during school class and for middle schoolers and high schoolers, there's an advisory class. It is important that the funds that we do have are implemented in the current program. And this idea that Maya Kamas will offer something different that is not already in place within NVUSD is a lie. It will only be able to support a small amount of the community or the rest of the community if they can only support less than 400 students. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute. Your time starts now. Caller ending with the last four digits, 5382, you are now live. Please start your public comment. You are now live, please start your public comment.
El uniforme.
Hello, señora.
Bueno.
Sí, le escuchamos.
Eh, please, Spanish? Eh, en intérprete?
Sí. Sí, le podemos interpretar.
Okay, gracias.
Por favor, diga su nombre, y después, uh, su comentario.
Uh, mi nombre es Edidi Piña, este...
Como, Edidi Peña?
Edidi Piña.
Hello, my name is David Peña.
No, Edidi Piña.
Estevi?
Edidi, eh, S, B, E, Y, D, griega, Piña.
Estevi Peña. Piña.
Edidi Piña.
Okay, hello, my name is Estevi Peña, Piña.
Este, yo estoy hablando...
Sí, diga, por favor.
Ya puedo hablar?
Sí, puede hablar.
Yo estoy hablando, ah, ah. Yo quiero aportar, que no estoy de acuerdo en que se abra el charter de Maya Camas, porque no es un programa realmente inclusivo, porque la oportunidad serían de pocos niños. Eh, actualmente, como decían en otro comentario anterior, ya están los programas que supuestamente ellos están ofreciendo. De alguna manera, yo me siento frustrada al ver...
I'm sorry, I, I do not agree with opening the Maya Camas. Uh, this school is actually just for a few children. Okay, continue.
Yo me siento frustrada al ver que, por el capricho de algunos personas, eh, de una élite alta, este, muchos niños de la clase media y baja vamos a quedar sin muchos recursos. Yo pensaba que no existía en este país lo que se dice corrupción como en México, pero con todo esto que se ha venido dando, este, pienso...
I, I am frustrated due to some of, in the community who have higher, uh, sources of income, uh, are not allowing some of us with lower and middle incomes for our children's education. Siga, por favor.
Uh, y este, este tipo de situaciones se me hacen elitistas, racistas, discriminales, y nos están discriminando a gran parte de la población de Napa, que no vamos a estar incluidos en este tipo de programas.
I feel that this program is a racist program and that, uh, we are being discriminated a large proportion within this community.
Yo por eso pido que analicen bien esta propuesta que no está bien elaborada, que solo por el capricho de algunos quieren que se lleve a cabo.
Uh, que usted pide que ellos analicen, ¿qué?
Que analicen bien este, este proyecto que les están llevando a la mesa, porque no es funcional para la comunidad.
And I ask, uh, that you properly analyze this project, because I do not believe that it is, uh, for the good of the community.
Y creo que su prioridad para ellos que van a tomar una decisión debe de ser el bienestar de toda la comunidad, no solo de unos cuantos.
I believe that if you take this decision, it must be for the good of the community, not just a few.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute, your time starts now.
Good afternoon, my name is Wendy Agan Dominguez, parent of a special education middle school student. Rapidly declining student achievement and a one-size-fits-all model within NVUSD and their special education support system has left me with the only option to remove my special education student from NVUSD. I was hopeful Maya Camas would be approved in time for my son to start this fall. However, there is still an opportunity for all NVUSD middle schoolers to benefit from this innovative program, open to all, and not available at any public school in Napa Valley. The Association of Medical American Educators Journal states, "The most powerful predictor of change in reading and math in all models was decreasing the student-teacher ratio, with larger gains especially for Hispanic and low special education services." Maya Camas fills this need. I feel certain that MCMS would have not only met my son's special education needs with their innovative education plans, but would have helped him thrive. I implore you to support the Maya Camas charter middle school petition.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute, your time starts now.
Hi, uh, my name is Will Daley. I am a parent of a Napa, uh, school system child. Um, you know, we hear lots of accusations of racism and whatnot. Those, those are misplaced. Um, there's no, it's no coincidence that a lot of people protesting Maya Camas have the exact same talking points. They've been handed them by the administration that is trying to make this about race. It's not. It's actually about providing an opportunity for Napa to institute an innovative program that hopefully will get fed back into the schools. The administration doesn't want to hear it. They don't want to hear from parents about why they're taking their kids out of the school system. Um, and, you know, unfortunately, we're stuck in a, in a vicious cycle. What's going to keep happening? We're going to keep losing people because of the sort of intimidation that's going on by the administration. It's not a racist school. It's designed for everyone. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute, your time starts now.
Hello, my name is Anne Swinburne, and I'm a charter school policy expert with the California Teachers Association. And I am also an expert on the requirements of AB 1505. I have followed the MCMS petition from the very beginning, and it is very clear that this appeal should be denied by the State Board of Education for all the good reasons that the CDE, the district, and the county have cited. The petitioners and their attorneys are doing a very strong job of attempting to confuse or make murky what is a very straightforward issue. There was no abuse of discretion committed by either the district or the county. Please don't allow the courtroom tactics you are experiencing from the petitioners and their team to sway you. The law is clear. Please deny this appeal as AB 1505 intended. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute, your time starts now.
Hi, my name is Sylvia Regalotto Zachlot. I am a parent of the Napa Valley Unified School District, having kids, um, currently in, um, K through ninth grade, uh, schools here. Um, I think one thing is really evidently clear. Our school system is not funded to the level that the state should be funding it at, and it's instead dividing families and communities, because that funding is not available so that we can incorporate all of these really great programs. I would like to express that I would like to see the charter denied. I believe that the district made due diligence, the county made its due diligence, heard from community members about how funding would be diverted away from our schools for all, and being able to implement programs. Instead, I would like to see the states and this board's efforts consolidated towards working with local school districts and counties so that our school systems can be funded to the levels that they need to be funded, so that our teachers and our students can thrive, and all of our kids in our community throughout California can thrive as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute, your time starts now.
Good afternoon, State Board members. My name is Nirvana Casrejon. I am the president and CEO of the California Charter Schools Association, and I am very familiar with the terms of 1505 as they radically transform the way in which charter schools could continue to be authorized by all of the authorizers across the state. I certainly understand that there is some confusion in many ways around how schools should be authorized and what the abuse of discretion standard is. But let me be clear, as having been a party to those negotiations, it is absolutely clear that the North Star of charter schools being, existing for, uh, and in response to the needs of families who are here petitioning, uh, for an establishment of a school that meets their needs and broadens the appeal of choices and opportunities for all students, um, is of paramount importance here. 1505 is clear on what the, the standards of evidence that districts and authorizers must present.
Thank you.
They simply have not met that standard.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute, your time starts now.
My name is Gerter Wheeler, and I am an alumni of California public schools, including UC Berkeley. I'm also an advocate of public education. I've lived in Napa since 2008 and have two children in the school district, and all I can say is that I have completely lost my faith in our educational system because of how the district and county have behaved over the last couple of years, including in regards to this charter school in particular. Enrollment is sharply declining because of the district and its actions. Denying this charter has only made it worse and will continue to. I very much support Maya Camas. We need it in our community. It has a quality educational program and is very equitable, sorely needed in this community. Please don't lose any more families over this, because it is happening, because we do not have good schools in our district and are only getting worse. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute, your time starts now. Caller ending with the last four digits, two, six, two, nine. You are now live, please start your public comment.
Yes, uh, this is John from Napa, and I'm a parent of two school-age children. Uh, this whole process has been extremely frustrating by watching the politics that have come to the surface here in Napa. Um, meanwhile, the school has been closing the, the, the good options that had existed for kids in our community, including, uh, our kids, and we have had reached the point of where we've pulled one kid out and are paying money to, uh, send her to private school and are, uh, struggling with what to do next. Uh, the options that had existed would have been a much better situation than are now, and, yeah, I, it's, it seems the politics that have, uh, and the lobbying efforts behind the scene have been pretty blatant to those of us here in Napa.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute, your time starts now.
I'm, I'm just calling in support of, um, Maya Camas. I'm really disappointed in, with, like, what the last caller said. Um, as how political this has all gotten, um, around the school. Um, so, I'm just calling to express my support. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next caller, please state your name and affiliation for the record. You have one minute, your time starts now. Caller ending in the last four digits... Go ahead.
Agree. Um, yes, my name is Jermoke Hinton. I'm with the California Charter School Association. Um, and I, uh, would hope that, um, again, previous callers would, we would note that the, um, politics is not necessary when we're looking at quality of education. Um, and so we, um, do support this, uh, vote as it's going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, look, that concludes public comment for item number 12.
Thank you very much. Uh, at this point, I'd like to ask our liaisons, Vice President Glover Woods and Member Olken, if they'd like to make some initial comments as we go into board discussion.
Thank you, President Darlene Hammond. Uh, first of all, I'd like to thank the petitioners and the district and county representatives for their presentation today, and most likely, mostly would like to thank all of the callers who called in during public comment. Um, it's quite evident that there are strong feelings and passions on both sides of the item that we, that we have before us today. Um, I just wanted to take a moment to, uh, really bring back to the forefront the two choices that we have in front of us. And based upon the information that we have received and this public hearing, we as a board need to decide one of two things. We need to decide if we will reverse the decision that was made by Napa Valley Unified School District and the Napa County Board of Education, because we feel that there's evidence that there was an abuse of discretion by the county and the board, I'm, I'm sorry, by the county board and the district, or we all can choose...
Vice President Glover Woods, I should have announced that we've closed the public hearing at 12:12 PM. Please continue.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, so going back to the two, the two decisions that we have in front of us. Uh, one would be to reverse the decision that was made by the district and the county board, because we feel that there is evidence in the documentary record, uh, that there was an abuse of discretion made by the district and the county board, or we would uphold the decision made by both of those entities, and that decision was that they denied the charter petition. Um, the last piece I'd like to add is that it's really important, and it's very challenging, especially for those of us who are practitioners and educators in the field, to, um, but we need to understand that we have to make our determination based on if there's evidence in the documentary record that supports the allegations of abuse of discretion. Uh, we cannot make our decision based upon whether we agree with the findings or disagree with the findings, or agree with the action or disagree with the action. And as I said, I, I believe that's challenging at times for those of us who are in the field and can bring that lens as well. But the decision before us requires us to make a decision if there was an abuse of discretion and if that abuse of discretion is supported by the evidence that's in the documentary record. So I'll reserve my additional comments and questions for our board discussion, and I'd like to, um, invite Member Olken to also provide some initial comments before we go into discussion.
Thank you, um, Vice President Glover Woods, and, um, I want to start by also, um, just acknowledging the incredible amount of work and time and thought that has gone into this process thus far, um, from the petitioners to the district, to the county, to this, to the CDE, to all the callers. At, um, as Member Glover Woods said, there's, there's clearly strong, um, feelings on both sides, and there's also been a lot of thought and, um, a lot of care about what is best, in the best interest of students across the state. So I just want to start with that and thank everybody who called in. It's, it's important to hear all those perspectives, and I really, they are, um, in my, they're, they're, I, I, they're here in my heart on all sides, so, thank you. Um, I'm just going to offer a few, a few, um, additional framing thoughts before we start our, our board discussion. Um, so as you know, this is only the second time that we are hearing a charter school, um, appeal under AB, oh, AB 1505 here at the State Board. Um, and in fact, for the petitioners and governing bodies along the way, um, they're also working through this process for the first time. Um, we heard that, um, I think, um, on, in both sets of presentations. Um, and again, I appreciate, these are hard, this, this is a hard new process, and we're all trying, we're all working to do right by it. So, we have a new role. Um, instead of providing a new review of the merits of the proposed charter, um, we are simply, we are reviewing the process by which those merits were determined. And as Member Glover Woods said, that may be kind of uncomfortable, um, for us, but it's, it is the role that we have been prescribed by law. So some of the questions that we need to be asking ourselves are, was the, was the process fair and lawful? Was it free from bias? And I would add, just like we must do in making all decisions in our roles as educators, we're students at the heart of the decision-making process. On that note, one important thing I'd like to emphasize is that even in this new era in which AB 1505 gives local governing bodies more control of, over the charter petition process and more legal reasons to deny a petition, I want to remind us that as we consider this item, the assumption in law is still that charter schools play an important role in the public education landscape and should be encouraged. That's still the basis, that, that was not changed by 1505 and that's still at the heart of ed code related to charter schools. And I too will, I have some further thoughts and questions, but I'll save those for just a little bit later as our discussion proceeds. Thank you.
I'm going to also offer a couple of thoughts about the framing for our discussion. And I just want to note that board members obviously should raise their Zoom hands if they want to make comments as we get into discussion and remind the panelists that if a board member has a question for you, then you'll be recognized and unmuted so that you can respond. But please do not raise your hand or expect to be acknowledged during the board's deliberation, otherwise unless there's a direct question for you. I want to just offer a couple more thoughts about the complex framework we're, we're working in here. I want to note that I appreciate hearing from members of the community and it sounds as though the district has developed a strong communication to parents that, and members of the community, that programs they care about would be threatened by the approval of the charter. And I'm empathetic with the fearfulness that that kind of messaging can create. Every parent is deeply and appropriately concerned about the welfare of their child. Our job is to sort of look at this case in the context of setting some parameters for how we will consider the immediate case and cases in the, in the future. There are some procedural questions about the timing of the appeal petition being sent to the county and the district and about the availability of the written findings at the time of the vote. Some of those questions are troubling. The evidence before us, as we've heard, can be read either way. There are also questions about the proper role of the county and the state in reviewing district actions. The, with respect to the educational analysis, the county statement of findings noted they did not agree with the district's analysis and the findings that the petitioners were demonstrably unlikely to successfully implement the program. And in fact, they noted that they thought that the MCA MS was providing enrolled students with educational benefit in a program substantially similar to River Middle School, a school that had been operating for more than 20 years within the district was being closed this school year and offered a similar program. They later noted that the program that was offered has been part of a series of programs in the New Tech Network founded in Napa. These are project-based schools. So there is an elementary New Tech School, a high school, a New Tech High School, and this would be providing a middle school. Apparently, the district had closed River Middle School, Charter School, on the condition that it would continue to be operated by the district, using that model of instruction. And the transition was effective for one year, 2019, 2020. And then the River Middle School was closed, had a full enrollment every waitlist, with a waitlist every year consistently showing academic performance. So the county sort of both laid out for multiple paragraphs what they thought were the virtues of the petition and their reason for approving it educationally and noted that it was potentially fulfilling a particular need in that particular district, given the history of the district. So the sole basis for the county's denial was a fiscal impact statement. And one of our questions for us is what constitutes an appropriate showing of fiscal impact? This is a different basis than what we were talking about yesterday. The fiscal impact basis is under a different criterion of the law, not the one about receivership and fiscal distress, but a criterion that requires a finding that the charter school is demonstrably unlikely to serve the interests of the entire community in which the school is proposing to locate. And we heard that language in many of the comments. Analysis shall include consideration of the fiscal impact of the proposed charter school and detail specific facts and circumstances that analyze and consider the following factors, including the extent to which the proposed charter would substantially undermine existing services, academic offerings, or program offerings. And this is going to be a, a challenging framework for other districts as well as the one that we're considering. Because of course, no single school charter or otherwise does serve all the, the children in the community. So a literal translation of the interest of the entire community could lead to the denial of all charters. And of course, any charter school open will have an impact on the district's fiscal situation and loss of ADA as district students enroll in the new charter school. So one question we have is what should the standard be? The analysis is based on the fact of ongoing declining enrollment in the district, which, about which there was data presented at the county board meeting. And this goes to the question of were there written findings of fact? The decline was suggested that it would likely require reduction in staff be accelerated by the loss of students going to the charter school. I would note that that would be the case in any district or school with declining enrollment that maintains a constant ratio between the number of students and staff. Depending on how the shift is managed, it may or may not undermine the services offered to students, which is why the status specific finding and evidence that the new charter was substantially undermining district services and offerings. That did not really occur in that way at the county board meeting. At the same time, the findings document noted that there were other factors that could change assumptions about the teacher budget. On the one hand, there were the questions about the enrollment of recurrent students, some of whose parents had stated they'd leave the district. But on the other hand, the projected increase in enrollment due to TK students and estimated 416 new students by 2025, 26 would more than offset the potentially 300 or so students that might ultimately attend the middle school. And at a time when the state has increased allocations to education, including in the LCFS formula, funding for TK, after-school summer programs, and meals, there are many new factors that are shaping budgeting decisions for districts. So it's clear that a mere finding of potential fiscal impact of declining enrollment is not enough to establish that a proposed charter school does not serve the interests of the whole community. So I think these are questions that we're going to need to work our way through. There's also the question that even though the documentary record from the county notes that the district broke a promise to their parents and made decisions that the county questioned, including not locating the school where there was room for such a school in another building. The law specifies that the county's review is independent and de novo, and it is not a review of the district's process or findings. The county board is instructed accordingly that it should not take to, uh, under determine whether the district findings were correct, whether petitioners were treated fairly, and so on. And a critical issue then is if the county cannot make this determination, where does that determination lie? And in fact, it may lie with us. So I think we, I want to open the discussion at this point, but simply note that there are different framings on which one might tackle this question of whether there was an abuse of discretion at, at either level of the process. And let's see who wants to launch us into discussion. We'll start with Member Orozco Gonzalez.
Thank you again for such a thorough presentation and for all the public comments. I think they were very informative in understanding the whole aspect and the entire picture. I just have a question in regards to maybe to the Napa County Attorney about the procedural aspect. On page seven and eight of the item, the education code, section 47605K, allows a charter school petition to appeal to the county within 30 days and requires that appeal to be copied to the district at the same time. My understanding is that the Maya Comis charter did not follow the requirements of the education code initially because they failed to copy the school district, which delayed the start of the 90-day timeline for the county to make a decision. Is, am I understanding that correctly? I'm asking for clarity.
I, yes, you are understanding that correctly. The appeal was submitted directly to the county superintendent of schools and it was not, the, the school district was not copied on that appeal. The county superintendent of schools, after conferring with me, told petitioners that they needed to submit that to the school district as well. The school district was particularly concerned here that some items had changed within the petition that would require remand. And so we did make them submit the entire appeal packet to the school district so that the school district could review it and ensure that items had not changed and that there was no need for remand.
Okay, thank you.
Next, we have Member Glover Woods.
Thank you. I had a question regarding the written findings that were adopted by the county board. And I believe, I'm going to first address the question to Stephanie Farland if she's still on with us. And I'll start, I'll stop, I will start with Director Farland. So were the written findings that were adopted or ratified on April 5th reflective of comments or statements within the staff report and/or discussion that took place at the board meeting on March 15th?
Thank you, Member Glover Woods. Yes, they were. So there were, and I believe the county mentioned this as well, they had 26 sort of numbered findings within their resolution to deny that they ratified. I would say that 20 out of 21 of those, the first few statements were introductory, but 20 out of the 20, remaining 21 statements were present either in the staff report, the county staff report, or part of the board discussion at the board meeting. So the findings that the county ratified, the 26 findings, were not a surprise. They, they were actually discussed at the board meeting at the county or they were in the staff report. I'd also like to say that that staff report is just that, it's the staff report that, that was posted 15 days prior to the decision meeting. It's required by law now. That staff report is not required to be adopted by the board, just as our staff reports aren't required to be adopted by you. So just to make that clarification as well. But yes, the findings were findings that were just either discussed, came from the staff report, or also came from the discussion at the county board meeting. I hope that answers your question.
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Apologies, President Darlingham, I believe you're on mute.
Thank you, Member Yashimoto Tari, and then Member Escobedo.
Thank you. And I also want to thank everyone for your presentations today and all the public comments. Thank you, poor president, for your very thorough summarization of all of the different issues. I have a question because as we're charged with determining whether there was abuse of discretion, I think the order of operations is important and it can open the door to the perception of such, whether, whether or not it was actually an abuse of discretion or not, it could cause the perception of such. So I think this is a question for either county council or possible, or possibly Director Farland. My question is, could the county office board of ed change their March 15th vote to deny the appeal if it was found later that there weren't sufficient findings when they were bringing the findings forward on April 5th for ratification? Could there have been a change to the initial decision on March 15th?
I'm going to allow the county's attorney to answer that.
Thank you, Director Farland. That question was never put to me by my client, and so I did not research that question. If they had asked at that time whether or not they could change their decision, I would have looked into that. But that was not requested by the county board. And I just want to ask if Mr. Schultz has anything else to add because he was at that board meeting.
Yeah, I mean, the only thing I would add is that, you know, when the final decision came down, there was a five to two vote. There was a split on the board and there were those that were in favor of granting the charter. But ultimately, the majority of the board found that, that the community impact was significant enough that it met that criteria for denying the appeal. And respectfully to, to President Darlingham's comments, you know, all these criteria require judgment. And as you know, the district had findings that our findings, our staff report did not agree with, but we did have one particular finding that we thought the county board should consider, and that was community impact. And you can argue about whether it was material enough to deny or not, but that was for the county board to judge, I think, and not for the state board of education to supersede that judgment. There's a slide in the documentary record. I think it's page 1,422 of the county board's documentary record. It's a presentation from FICMAT and School Services about the impact of declining enrollment. And you can't cut fast enough, deal with it unless you do things like close schools. And adding additional declining enrollment to a district that's already declining rapidly, that's based on Department of Finance numbers, not on, you know, local projections, does have an impact. It means you're going to have to cut programs beyond the staff you can cut just because you lose students. And that's what the county board ultimately decided.
Thank you.
President Darlingham, I apologize. I believe mute's still on.
I'm sorry. I'm trying not to make noise in the meantime. Member Escobedo and then Member Glover Woods. Let me just say to the question about how we evaluate fiscal impact, there really is a, we, we, we need the entire evidentiary record to be having this conversation in front of us because if there were a finding that having declining enrollment in and of itself, even when it might be offset by increases in enrollment for other reasons, that that is enough to deny a charter would have substantial ripple effects across the decision-making process. Number Escobedo and then Member Glover Woods.
Yes, in the same line of, of the fiscal impact, there were just so many items under the district analysis where, you know, there was a cash flow issue that excluded lease and utility expenses, which made the charter have a negative, I believe, cash balance. And then, then I see that the charter's written submission did not contain specific citations. I mean, I see that really throughout the chart that was provided under the whole fiscal financial and operation plan. And I'm, I'm, I'm just curious, I, I don't know if it's the charter's not understanding the district's facts, but well, I'm, I'm just curious to the process between the county and charters. Is there like, is, and, and I do understand that the, the burden of proof is on the charter, but i- is there any explanation to the charter's understanding that they have to provide specific citations to the documentary record from the district? Just really curious how that whole process occurs.
Is that a question you want to direct to the charter petitioners?
I, I guess to both, from the charter as well as the district.
So if we can ask the petitioners to respond?
This is John Leno. I can respond to that. This is a very, this is a new process, Director Escobedo. It's very cumbersome. As you can see, there are thousands of pages of materials that we have to look at and review, and we have a very tight window to do it. So we have to request it, then we have to wait to get it. Now, the, the statement that we didn't provide citations is false, patently false. And you can just look at the record and see at the end of our letter, we have numerous end notes. and see at the end of our letter, we have numerous endnote citations to the record, tons of them. What the confusion, I think, is, is the state created a form earlier this year, CD created a form that they wanted petitioners to use. But it didn't make any sense to use that form in our context, because part of our problem is the absence of citations to the record. There's the absence of things that, at least at the foot for, for the county, for what the county did. I think there's abundant citations with regard to the district. Our focus here is mostly on the county's failure to proceed in a manner required by law. It is not possible. Look, I litigate for a living. And, and when I do petitions for writs of mandate to courts, I have months to peruse and go through the record and cite to a record of this size. It's crazy. This, I realize this is what the law gives us. We're stuck with it. The district is stuck with it. The county's stuck with it. And now you're stuck with it. But it's very difficult to do. So we cited to as much as we could, and only could cite to the big stuff, because it didn't make a lot of sense for us to delve into the little stuff if we weren't going to prevail on the big stuff. So that's why we have the citations, endnote citations at the end of our summary, which is what the statute requires, to the documentary record.
Thank you.
Uh, Member Glover Woods?
Thank you. My question is also for the petitioners. I don't know if it would be their attorney or the petitioners who presented. I just wanted to get clarification on the difference in the documents, if there were differences, in regards to what was submitted to the county office on, I believe it was December twenty-first, and what was submitted to the district after that, and then the documents that were submitted on January 5th. So I'm trying to discern if there were differences in the actual documents, and if so, what those differences are.
So I can respond, I can respond to that. I can respond to that. So, so the, there was no difference to the petition. The petition is the issue. The statute requires that the petition, that be, that the actual charter petition that's presented to the, to the county on appeal be presented at the same time to the district. My Comis did not do that. We inadvertently did not attach the, we didn't copy the district. So we provided it on the thirty-first of December. The petition that was submitted to the district is exactly the same petition that they processed. In fact, we pulled the petition from the district's website. So we actually pulled the version of the petition that they had posted on their website as the petition. There is no difference in it. The district still, though, claimed that they thought there was something different. They thought that we added additional signatures to the petition, which did not occur. So for the benefit of doubt, what we did was we copied the district and the county on January 5th of the entire appeal packet as a courtesy and to clear up the whole situation. But the petition itself, which is what's required by law to be provided to the district, was, was without doubt, it's actually in their briefs, was provided on December thirty-first. There's no contest about that.
Okay, so just a quick follow-up question, and thank you so much for that clarification. So the petition itself was given to both the county office and the district, let's say by December thirty-first. There was no change to the original petition that went to the district when they had their particular decision. And then on January 5th, additional supporting documentation was submitted along with the petition. Is that correct?
Not, not quite. So, so, so what happened was on December twenty-first, there's an enormous packet of materials that was given to the county for our appeal. That's the appeal packet, that's what's required by the statute. So it's the petition itself, which we pulled down from the district website, and our, you know, opposition to the, to the district's action, the district's findings to deny the charter, the things that you need to have for a petition. That was provided to the county on December twenty-first. Later that week, remember, this is the holiday period, too. Later that week, the district contacted the county and said, we didn't get a copy of the petition. The law requires that we get a copy of the petition. The county told us that, brought it to our attention correctly, and we provided a copy of the petition on December thirty-first to the district. The statute requires that we provide it to the district, and we did on that date. The district complained that they didn't have all the appeal materials. So what we did, which is not required for us to provide them, by the way. So what we did on January 5th was, we provided the district a copy of all the petition materials that had been provided to the county. When I say then, we provided the district a copy of all the appeal materials that have been provided to the county, which is our letter, a copy of the district's own findings, and in our appeal cover letter, essentially, the substance of the appeal. The statute only requires that we provide the petition. We did that on the thirty-first of December, but we provided even more on the fifth.
Thank you.
And that's because, by the way, I'm sorry, I was just gonna say that, that's because the district was complaining about the process. The district wanted the county to remand it back to them, so they would hold on to it for another thirty days and perhaps do nothing. That was the intent. That was, that's what was going on procedurally at the time. And if you dig into this voluminous record, you'll see that in the correspondence. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Glover Woods, did you want to make an additional comment, or were you finished?
I, I wanted to, and thank you. Thank you so much to the representative for the, for the petitioners. I also wanted to, excuse me, just a moment. I also wanted to ask for just feedback on that same topic from the, from the county office as well. Thank you.
Thank you. So what was, the, the physical petition itself was the same submitted to the county and the district. The issue is that they, the petitioners submitted a cover letter as well as nine different exhibits. Some of those exhibits contained new information that had not been presented to the district originally. So the district was requesting to see all the information that was provided and requesting that we remand the petition to them if there were material changes that required remand under the statute. So we needed that information to be provided to the district so that they could review that. If you look in the documentary record, in fact, there was an agreement to redact those portions of the appeal packet that were disputed, and that were additional information that were, were provided to the county board that had not been provided to the district, so as to make it so that the, the entire appeal packet was the same information that was provided to Napa Valley Unified School District Board of Trustees and the Napa County Board of Education. So there was a lot of come back and forth here in order to get that appeal packet to the point where it was the same information that had been presented to the district initially.
Thank you. I just want to remind panelists that if we want to call, if you call, you can certainly respond, but otherwise not to interject. Thanks. A member of Osco Gonzalez?
Um, I have another question. I'm looking at the county's findings, and I see numerous examples of fiscal and community impact of the proposed school cited, so including cuts of staffing and programs, additional school closures, entering into fiscal distress, cutting thirty-four teaching jobs and more. I'd like, I'd like to ask the county to talk more about the fiscal and community impact of this charter on Napa Unified School District and its students.
Sure. So-
If I could just ask that those, that, that be framed in the context of the findings of that, that were made at the board meeting, that would be helpful.
Sure. So, so as the findings reflect, and as the, the staff report and the staff presentation at the March fifteenth board meeting reflect, Napa Valley Unified has been in steady declining enrollment since about two thousand and fifteen. It predates all of these disputes. It's based on demographics. It's based on births. It's based on household formation in the county. Nothing about this decision is going to change that. Again, Department of Finance is projecting that Napa County is declining more rapidly than almost any other county in the states in the top five, both for the one-year, five-year, and ten-year forecast. That includes their projections for adding transitional kindergarten, and that is in the analysis. So that includes the projections for adding TK students. They're still going to decline, and they're going to decline steadily. So what our analysis found was that, in that circumstance, adding the additional decline of initially about a hundred students and growing to over three hundred students over a number of years based upon the charter petitions' projections, was going to require additional cuts to the district's budget when they're already dealing with declining enrollment of initially over a million dollars and growing to well over three million dollars if the charter met its projected enrollment. And again, if you lose a hundred students, and let's say you have a staffing ratio of twenty-five to one, you can cut four teachers, right? And that's an impact, but it's an impact that you can offset by reducing staffing. But cutting the classroom staffing only gets you about thirty-five percent of the cuts you need to make for the revenue that is lost for those students. So you have to go and you have to cut elsewhere to deal with it. And, you know, Governor Brown may disagree about whether an additional two, three million dollars a year is material, but what we presented to the county board was, you may consider this material, and we left it to their judgment, right? We didn't make a staff recommendation. But the reality is, you know, I think for those of you who've been practitioners in school districts know, cutting an additional two, three million dollars from your budget every year is difficult, and it's challenging. And while right now districts appear flush in this state, and Napa Valley Unified has healthy reserves like most districts do because of all the one-time money that has come in, we know that declining enrollment is going to continue. We know that we're not going to continue to see revenue growth in the way we've seen it in the past year. You look at what's happening at the stock market, the state's dependence on capital gains. So we projected, you know, that this is going to add on to your fiscal distress. And also, you know, as a reminder, and this is also in the documentary record, you know, the county offices is in the position of, of having fiscal oversight of districts. That's a core role for a county office of education, right? The AB twelve-hundred fiscal oversight. It is, it, an accepted fact in terms of school business operations, that when you are steadily declining enrollment, you have to do things like close small schools, because otherwise you cannot get ahead of it. And those districts in the state that are consistently in fiscal distress are the ones that have not been able to deal with those issues. And so one of the things that the county considered is the fact that this charter petition was directly in response to the closure of a small school program. And that if, and, and there's a letter in the documentary record that I had sent, signed in two thousand and nineteen, telling the district that they needed to do things like close small schools, so well before this decision was made. If a district has to deal with a charter coming and taking the students every time they close a small school, that's going to make it very difficult for a district administration to make those difficult decisions, and they are painful. And other schools were closed, besides the River School that is in dispute here. But the fact is, they made decisions they have to make. You can disagree about whether they closed the right school. I know there's disputes about how it happened and bad feelings there. But from the standpoint of fiscal impact, it's undeniable that adding the charter's school and the lost enrollment to an already declining enrollment creates a very difficult situation for a district administration. I hope that answered your question.
Yes, thank you.
Other comments or discussion? Number Oakland?
Thank you. I was struggling to get my little electric hand up. So I just want to share, after having reviewed the documentary record in great detail, I wanted to share my perspective on this for our consideration, recognizing that, as I've said before, this is, this is a new role for us, and it's an important time in the, the landscape of public education. But I, I feel compelled to share sort of my take on where we are. After reviewing the documentary record, I do believe there is evidence of abuse of discretion. My Comis Charter Middle School has made a compelling case that the district process was biased. I'm not convinced that it was possible for the charter school to receive a fair and impartial hearing and decision from the Napa Valley Unified School District Governing Board. The district process appears to have required much more than the already arduous process laid out by law. For example, a capacity interview is not a requirement of law, and yet it appears to have been held against the petitioners when they didn't, when it, it was, it was requested and held against them. It's unclear to me why the district limited petitioners to have only one of their content experts at the capacity interview. It does seem to me like there was an element of intimidation in this process. I'm concerned about the testimony and public comment found in the doc, in the documentary record, shared at the ACCS meeting, and even today, that verged on attacking the petitioners' motives and intent to serve the entire community. The charter petition is very intentional in describing how Mya Comis planned to operate in a part of town that in and of itself would draw a diverse school population in terms of income, ethnicity, and language. In my mind, the stark difference between how the county reviewed the charter and how the district reviewed the charter is another example. The county did not find one single element of the charter petition to be flawed or lacking. In fact, their review was glowing. By contrast, the district view was, review was quite harsh and raised a multitude of concerns. And while it is not our job to decide who was right, this difference points to a significant bias. In my opinion, the district process as a whole was a clear abuse of discretion. One of the big things we've been talking about is the timeline for the county decision. And even if we don't, even if we presume that their denial and written findings fell within the legally prescribed timeline, and I'm not going to fall into that, I'm not going to make comment on that. The process by which they derived their written findings was suspect. The petitioners did not receive a transcript of the April 5th meeting. This limited their ability to make citations to the documentary record. This feels like a big process error to me. As the documentary record shows, while the county board discussed the findings, which were written based on the recollections of a subset of their board members, there's quite a bit of discussion about whether they actually captured that discussion or not. The county board based their determination on the specific criterion of the law that suggests the charter school is demonstrably unlikely to serve the interests of the entire community in which the school is proposing to locate. Their reasoning was not based upon which students the charter would attract, retain, and serve. Instead, it was based on the district's assertion that the charter would cause financial harm. The district's argument about the financial ramifications of the new charter seemed threatening. Napa Valley Unified projects that it have to reduce the number of teachers by thirty-four over the first five years of the charter. It would have to close additional schools, reduce programs and services to students, and reduce expenditures on contracts in order to mitigate the loss of funding associated with the loss of students to Mya Comis Charter. The district suggests that the establishment of a charter school that will grow over five years from a hundred and eighty to three hundred and thirty-six students may cause in the result an elimination of middle school sports programs, and elementary school music and physical education programs, and counselors, and intervention, and intervention teachers, and electives, and further closures. They also alleged that if the charter were approved, they anticipated renegotiating and or ending contracts with the Napa County Office of Education for after-school programs, summer programs, and CTE programs. These assertions seem overstated and intended to intimidate potential supporters of Mya Comis, particularly, particularly in this era, when there are increased state allocations to public education. I am disturbed by the threats that Napa Valley Unified School District specifically named canceling contracts with the county office. This appeared to be a tactic to dissuade the county from approving the petition. It is for these reasons that I, I do feel that an abuse of discretion occurred at the county and district levels. I, I feel compelled to share all this with you, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Um, Member Glover Woods, and then Member Orozco Gonzalez.
I, I can speak after Member Orozco Gonzalez.
I, I can speak after Member Orozco Gonzalez if, if that would be appropriate.
That would be fine. Member Orozco Gonzalez?
Thank you, Ms. Um, Glover Woods. I just have another question because I, I'm looking at this and I'm thinking, this is a question for Stephanie Farland. It is my understanding that our job is to consider the documentary record only and the CDE staff report is clear that the petitioner lacks specific citations and details to support the MCM's allegations. While I see numerous citations to support the district and county's findings in the record, I'd like Stephanie just to speak a little bit more about the lack of citations in more detail.
Sure. Um, you are correct. There are numerous footnotes, and I think we, we gave the exact number earlier in my presentation. Um, the problem with the citations that they weren't specific citations actually showing us evidence of where the abuse of discretion took place. And one of the um, in one of the slides, I gave an example of, of citations going back to twenty-eight page reports, citations going back to a list of findings without being specific about where those were the abuse of discretion took place. And from the CDE's perspective, you know, it is on the burden of the charter to show us exactly where that is. We can't comb through it and try to make up that on our own. So we are expected, our charters are expected to have, give us, and it's an ed code, specific citations to the documentary record. Um, and we felt that those were not specific uh citations.
Thank you. Because I see based on the review and the appeal of the documentary record, I don't see that there's any evidence of abuse of discretion by either the district or the county board. Um, I feel like the CDE's analysis gives us really our duty as a board to implement the law. And this is clearly a decision by both the local district and the county board, I feel, has followed the law. So thank you so much for your information.
Uh, Members Glover Woods? And then Member Olken, is your hand up too? Okay, Member Glover Woods.
Thank you, President Darling Hammond. Um, first, let me say, uh, before I ask my question, um, I definitely appreciate the comments made by Member Olken. Um, one of our goals as a public education system is to be sure we have great schools for students. And that's inclusive of what would be a traditional, uh, would be, would be considered a traditional public school as well as charter schools. Our charter schools play a very, very important role in the education of students in California. Um, also, I want to say that procedures matter. And it's very, very important that as, again, we are all getting acquainted and, and knowing how to best address things that come forward in the form of petitions, that, um, that procedures, timelines, and whatnot continue to be followed. Um, I do want to ask, um, and then I have another comment to make. I wanted to ask Director Farland about the um, about the, what is necessary when we're looking at abuse of discretion? If the board were to determine that there was an abuse of discretion, does that need to reflect that the abuse of discretion happened at both the district and county levels? Or could abuse of discretion happen at one level and not the other? And I, I think that's, that's my question. Does it need to have occurred at both the district and the county board or just one?
It is the CDE's uh understanding that it needs to happen at both.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. And just my, I, I'm not sure if this will be my closing comment, but a, a comment that I wanted to make as well, and it goes a little bit back to the initial comments that I made at the beginning of our discussion of the item. Um, I do believe the statute is very clear that as a board, we have to base our decision on the documentary record and the evidence that is outlined in the documentary record as it relates to uh the allegations for abuse of discretion. Um, we, we cannot, per my understanding and what um I have read, base that decision on anything outside of that. Uh, again, whether we feel that the district and county boards findings were the findings they should have come up with, or that they shouldn't have come up with any findings at all. Um, we are to look at the evidence that's been given to us and then make our decision on if there was an abuse of discretion. And if that abuse of discretion uh took place per the definitions that we've received. So I just want to underscore that and acknowledge this is a difficult decision, and um I, I won't give any other commentary on my thoughts on on either end of this, but it's a difficult decision. But I just ask us to adhere to, again, the statute that we have been tied to and make our decision based upon that.
I will um add a comment and then see if we can move towards the motion. Um, I'm aware that we're going to start losing a couple of our board members uh in the next half an hour. Um, I, when we have this, experienced this kind of a discussion and hearing, it does feel like a he said, she said, uh, and we hear different things back and forth from both, both sides. Uh, like uh, uh, our liaisons, I went back to and read the record in great detail and asked for additional documentation. Uh, and uh, I do share the concerns voiced by Member Olken. Uh, I also think that on the question of the timeline, you could make an interpretation either way, uh, but the uh charter school did send the petition, which was the requirement of the law, uh, at, uh, by December thirty-first, which then raises the question as to whether other elements of the timing uh by themselves constituted an abuse of discretion. Uh, and again, that can be read both ways, and we can, we've heard both uh versions of whether it was just the petition or it needed to have the attachment, et cetera. I did look at the citations. I think in many cases they were as specific as one needed to have to see what the uh rec- record was saying, uh, although I think the CDE would have preferred, uh, and I understand why, uh, the uh actual uh statement or sentence or paragraph to be stated in full rather than simply referenced in an endo- eh, endnote. Um, and I am still concerned about the uh way in which um the fiscal analysis of declining enrollment uh was uh in my view, in the records from the county meeting, uh, not sufficient to sustain all of the statements that have been made about fiscal impacts on the community. Uh, so I do think that this case is a close call. Uh, and uh, I think the county did due diligence. The process was a well-intentioned one. Um, but uh, I think that this is a case where we need to uh weigh all of those features. And I'm going to have to turn off my answering machine very quickly here. I apologize. I've had to. I apologize. In order to get to the internet, I've had to move all around the house, and that leaves me in the, in the uh process of a, of a phone call that can be made. Um, so I do think that this is a very close call, and I, I think that it's important for us to be clear as people think about our future cases, uh, both about the need for a, an even more um complete record for us to be able to uh examine because we don't want to be in a he said, she said uh conversation, uh, and that we need to be um very clear that uh uh, that we're working together here to be sure that the process is fair and impartial and unbiased from the beginning, uh, and then complete and thorough and with respect to all of the technical details through the end. Um, with that, uh, I, I think that um that it is sufficiently um concerning that we could find abuse of discretion on multiple grounds in this case. Uh, but I also understand that the evidentiary record uh could be more thorough uh in, in our deliberation. Uh, I will leave it at that to say, uh, I'm, I'm open to a motion. And uh, we want to move the conversation further if there are any further questions. Member Glover Woods?
Um, again, kind of based on the evidence that was given to us in the documentary record, I move that uh we affirm the decision that was made by the uh school district and county board to deny the petition.
Do we have a second for that motion?
I'll second that.
Member Rodriguez, is there any further discussion? All right, with that, uh, Brooks, uh, can you call the roll call vote?
President Darling Hammond?
I will, uh, vote nay.
Member Escobedo?
I vote nay.
Vice President Glover Woods?
Yes.
Member Lewis?
Yes.
Member McQuillan?
Nay.
Member Olken?
Nay.
Member Orozco Gonzalez?
Yes.
Member Patilla Brownson?
No.
Member Porter?
No.
Member Rodriguez?
Yes.
Member Yosha Matatauri?
Yes.
The motion fails.
At this point, I think we need to be able to um document our own findings. Um, so I'm going to ask um our director what the next step would be.
Excuse me, um, President Darling Hammond, I, I think at this point, um, this motion tied five-five according to my count, Executive Director Allen confirms. So you, you might want to entertain a different motion um to find that there was an abuse of discretion with specific findings. I- is that where you're, is that what you're asking for?
Yes, I, I thought it was six to five.
Oh.
So do we, though we still need a
I can't count.
Affirmative motion, is that right?
We would need an affirmative motion.
Okay, uh, Member Olken?
I'd like to make that motion. Um, I move that the state would reverse determinations of the Napa Valley Unified School District Governing Board and the Napa County Board of Education to deny the Maya Comas Charter Middle School based on the State Board of Education's determination that an abuse of discretion occurred at both the county and district levels.
Do you second for that motion? We do need a second for that motion.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Member McQuillan. Uh, now I think we have to take another roll call vote. Is there any further discussion on that motion, I should ask? I want to ask um our counsel, uh, Judy Siders, if that is, motion is framed in the appropriate way.
I, I suggest we have some specific findings that articulate why you all are determining that there has been a dis- abuse of discretion, and I would also add that should the board find that there has been a abuse of discretion, you will need to consult with the petitioner regarding delegation of oversight authority to either the county or the district. So there's two more steps, I believe.
That both have to happen today? I mean, the first one obviously does, but the second one also?
Yes, I would, I would suggest, because otherwise then you're going to have to bring it back to the November, to the November meeting. And I think it would be, I, I assume the parties would like to get started um proceeding with opening the school um and preparing to open the school.
Um, Member Olken?
Um, I'm, I'm wondering if, and I don't know that I'm allowed to propose this, that now that we have the motion on the floor, we um take a break to draft our findings? I'm looking at you, Judy, so that um, so that we can include them in the motion as part, um, or we can include them in the record before we vote.
Sure, you can take a break now and um staff can try to work on some findings um that reflect your discussion. I would caution all of you to um not talk among yourselves at this point because that would be a um vaguely keen violation, but if you'd like to take a half-hour break, um, we could at that point um come back with findings, and we can also consult with the petitioner to determine um oversight. And that can be part of your motion.
All right, thank you. I think we may have a question from Members Glover Woods.
Yes, uh, and again, just kind of a, a procedural question on this. Uh, is the draft of findings to amend the motion that has been put on the floor? Because we have a motion and a second. We haven't called for a vote on that yet, so I just want to be clear on the draft of findings that is taking place. Is that to be include, included in the motion for us to continue to complete the vote? And then at that point, uh, we would move forward? Is that what we're doing?
I, I would suggest that we have the vote and the findings at the same time, um, given that was an issue with the county um as per your discussion. Again, Member Olken, if you have some language that you'd like to add about why, I mean, you, you've had, you've been, why you think there's been an abuse of discretion in particular, um, I, I think now would be the time to propose that, or we're happy to take a break and look at it. I, I know we, I know we will be losing some members if we take a break. I understand that.
I, I can, I mean, um, I mean, well, you know, I have, I'm, I'm not persuaded that the county has satisfied the requirements of C seven and provided evidence, the documentary record, that the proposed charter schools would substantially undermine existing services and offerings. Um, that's probably not quite the finding you're looking for though, right?
So that, that is the point, right?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I want to make sure that, I mean, I, um, additionally, the district's process was problematic in reviewing the findings. I believe the district also abused its discretion by failing to proceed in the manner required by law because it did not provide a fair and impartial process. Those are sort of my two key findings. I'm happy to add those to the, into the, into the motion if that feels sufficient.
That makes, that makes sense to me. I think those are the two that I wrote down as a potential finding.
Okay, um.
So it would be desperate to to, to simply go ahead with the vote if we could on those, on those two grounds, with those two findings. That is, that the district did not hold a fair and impartial hearing process and that uh the uh county did not satisfy the um uh level of uh evidence needed to demonstrate in its findings that the charter school substantially undermined existing services offerings or programs under uh C seven, four seven six oh five, C seven. With those amendments and clarification of findings, I would suggest we
Shall I remove that? Would you prefer, shall I remove with that entire language?
Yes, why, why don't you read it one more time so everyone is fully clear what, what they're voting on?
Okay, yeah. I move that the state board reversed the determinations of the Napa Valley Unified School District Governing Board and the Napa County Board of Education to deny Maya Comas Charter Middle School based on our determination that an abuse of discretion occurred at both the district and county levels. At the county level, um, the county has not satisfied the requirements of C seven and provided evidence in the documentary record that the proposed charter school would substantially undermine existing services, offerings, or programs. And the, in, at the district, the district abused its discretion by failing to proceed in the manner required by law because it did not provide a fair because it did not provide a fair and impartial hearing process.
All right, with that, uh, motion, now clarify, do you still need a second for the motion?
I will second.
All right, and then I think we need another roll call vote. We have a question, there's further discussion. Member Yoshimaru Tauri.
Before we vote, um, board president, I just wanted to confirm that, uh, as, and I'm gonna try to articulate this clearly, but as the state board heard, hears this appeal, we were to affirm that abuse of discretion, uh, did not occur at one or the other, district, county, or both. Right, but it could have been that one of the entities, um, had evidence of abuse of discretion and the other didn't. And that still would have been, oh, okay. Does that make sense?
It is, it's, it is our opinion that they, you'll need to find an abuse of discretion at both the district and the county level because otherwise it would, since both of the, um, decis- both of the determinations at each level are de novo, um, then if you determine that there was not an abuse of discretion at one, then the dis- the charter school did receive a fair and impartial hearing on the record. So I, I believe it is our interpretation that an abuse of discretion has to be at both levels, which, um, is consistent with member Olken's motion. And then I'd just like to caution, um, mem- um, President Darling Hammond, that after this vote, then we will need to, um, you'll need to call on the petitioner and ask them about the delegation of oversight.
Um, so we now have a motion and we have a second, and I think we need to call the roll call vote.
President Darling Hammond, it appears you may have a question for additional discussion of the motion?
Oh, I'm sorry, member Rodriguez.
Yes, I just have a question about that first motion that was made. Um, because it was seconded and I don't think we called it back before a second motion was made and seconded by somebody else, if I'm not mistaken. So I'm not sure if we have to recall that first motion?
And member Olken, do you, and, uh, member McQuillan, do you agree to withdraw the first motion?
I do.
Agreed.
Thank you. Thank you, member Rodriguez.
Thank you. Uh, Brooks, can you call the roll call vote?
President Darling Hammond.
Aye.
Member Escobedo.
Aye.
Vice President Glover Woods.
No.
Member Lewis.
No.
Member McQuillan.
Yes.
Member Olken.
Yes.
Member Orozco Gonzalez.
No.
Member Patillo Brownson.
Yes.
Member Porter.
Yes.
Member Rodriguez.
No.
Member Yoshimaru Tauri.
No.
The motion passes by a vote of six to five.
All right, I know this is very difficult and, um, I do wanna just make a statement about sort of future appeals uh, because, uh, this is going to continue to be a challenging process. And I appreciate the work that was done at the district level and the county level, uh, and all of the folks who called in. Uh, we will continue to consider allegations based on the entire administrative record. And to assist us in that work, I would encourage petitioners, districts, and counties to ensure that appeals brought to the state board provide the detail necessary for us to fully comprehend and meaningfully understand what transpired at the local level is reflected in the documentary record. Uh, and in the spirit of continuous improvement, um, I'd like to urge local authorizers to ensure that petitions receive an unbiased and impartial review, that the processes are conducted fairly and consistent with all legal requirements. Uh, today's appeal was submitted before, uh, the July board meeting. That means the district, county, and petitioner do not have the benefit of a prior model when submitting their documentation. Moving forward, the July and September appeals will provide an example drawn and an opportunity to examine our processes. State board expects that petitioners, districts, and counties will know and act within the requirements of law. Uh, and my expectation is that the state board will implement the law fairly and impartially, examine our own processes, and continue to learn. Uh, and this, uh, is the same expectation we have, of course, for petitioners, local authorizers, and the department. And I invite you to join us in this approach. Um, and at this moment, uh, I would actually like to, uh, get some guidance about the, uh, next steps that you're proposing, um, Judy.
I, I think at this point, the law requires that you, um, take action to delegate oversight to either the district or the county. They will become the chartering authority at that point. Um, the law requires that we consult, that you consult with the petitioner. I think you can ask the petitioner now, they're still on the line, um, which entity that they would like, um, to be the chartering authority. And if you'd like, that requires that you talk to the petitioner. As a courtesy, you can also talk to the district and the county if you'd like. But you, um, need to talk to the petitioner by statute. And then you'll have to take a vote on that.
Uh, all right, uh, where is the petitioner? Who wants to speak for the petitioner?
Oh, I can speak, Ms. So the, the petitioner's preference would be to have the county office of education be the oversight agency?
And then we consult with the county? Or is that a decis- is that a decision that stands over?
You certainly are welcome to talk to the district and county if you, if you would like.
Well, uh, you know, I think we will ask the county if they will accept, uh, obligation to, um, manage the charter, oversee the charter.
So I, I don't know, to be honest, that I have the authority to speak for the county superintendent of schools on this.
Yeah.
Um, I, it's my understanding we don't have a choice, but, um, I, I, I would have to consult with county superintendent to say that definitively about what we want.
If, if I can just speak, I, I don't believe it would be the county superintendent of schools decision. I believe it would be the county board of education's decision, and they act as a board, not individually. So I would, I would defer to the school district as to whether they prefer to authorize. And if they do not prefer, then the county board of education will take that on as required by the state board of education.
If I may, the statute is clear what happens here. The statute says what you do.
Excuse, excuse me, excuse me, but you weren't recognized, Mr. Lemo, I'm sorry. I, I, I think we've been clear that the statute requires consultation with petitioner, which we've done. And as a courtesy, we're talking to the district and the county. But Ms. Nix is correct, there really isn't a choice here. But as a courtesy, we will, we will talk to the other parties here on the line.
Well, and since there is no choice, we're courteously telling you that you will be, uh, overseeing the charter, saying that with great politeness.
It is with great politeness. If I say, I will tell my client that, thank you.
And you, you will need a motion on this.
You know, it's courteous and polite. Um, all right, I think that that is the end of our business then, is that right?
You will need a motion, you, you'll need a motion on this, please, and a vote.
Okay. Can I get a motion as to the designation of the county office of education as the oversight, um, agency for the charter?
I, I move that the county office of education is the oversight agency for the charter.
And a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Um, we need a roll call vote.
President Darling Hammond.
Aye.
Member Escobedo.
Aye.
Vice President Glover Woods.
Yes.
Member Lewis.
Yes.
Member McQuillan.
Yes.
Member Olken.
Yes.
Member Orozco Gonzalez.
Yes.
Member Patillo Brownson.
Yes.
Member Porter.
Yes.
Member Rodriguez.
Yes.
Member Yoshimaru Tauri.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much, and I just wanna thank, uh, the entire board, uh, all of the, um, petitioners and, um, members of district and county offices and callers who have participated in this today. We know this is a, uh, challenging process, that it, uh, takes, uh, a lot of, uh, creativity to figure out where we are supposed to be paying our, paying attention. Uh, and we look forward to, um, even more well-informed, uh, processes in the future. And I wish everybody a good rest of the day. This meeting is now adjourned at 1:30 PM. Thank you.
Bye, everyone.
Bye.